So, good evening, everybody. I'm Chris Warner, Chair of the St. Helena Planning Commission. This is the time and place for our regular meeting, Tuesday, December 2, 2025. I'd like to first suggest that we have the Pledge of Allegiance. And Ms. Anderson, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, indivisible and just as for all.
Could we have the call to order and the roll call?
Here.
Commissioner Covell?
Here.
Commissioner Lopez?
Here.
Vice Chair Ferdek is absent, and Chair Warner?
Here. Thank you. Before we have public forum, I just want to welcome back our colleague and fellow Commissioner, Commissioner Lopez, and very great to see you and glad to see you in good health and adding to our work here on the Planning Commission. So, congratulations for being back. Thank you. This is the public forum time. This is an opportunity for the public to address the Commission on items of interest to the public that are not on the agenda. Because of restrictions imposed by the Brown Act, the Commission may not engage in discussion nor take action on matters not described on the agenda. And if you are going to speak, please observe the time limit of four minutes each. Do we have any members of the public who would like to speak in the public forum? Go ahead, come up, introduce yourself.
Wayne Leong, 1145 Crane Avenue, St. Helena. Since we have several of these high-density residential projects before the city, all under the SB 330 blanket, one of the things I think that the city needs to look into, because all of these projects require objective standards, and at this point, objective standards are determined by the staff, but each objective standards does have, they're not exactly objective, because you can debate the objectivity of those standards. For instance, stormwater design, right? That's an area of where objective standards could be applied. Emergency access, internal circulation, those are also come under objective standards. And the big one is water neutrality. And I understand that under this project, that the Commission is deferring water neutrality to the City Council. But I think that's still an objective standard that we, as a community, should take part in and determine what exactly is the water neutrality, since I think the ordinance is maybe 15 years old. And certainly with climate change and all the impacts that we've undergone in the last several years, I think a reevaluation of what that should be, rather than having a developer pay an in-lug fee that adds to nothing, they leave the project and then everyone's stuck with the consequences. So, I think it's important that we, as a community, have a discussion, and I would suggest maybe a study session or somewhere, where these things can be described and explained, either by experts in the community, by the staff, and we evaluate it. Now that we have these projects underway, in the applications filed, we can see what the consequences will be. So I want to put that out, that somehow you guys schedule with the City Council some kind of study session or a separate meeting to address these things, rather than leaving it up to staff, which then generates, you know, 300 pages of reports that we somehow have to understand. The other important thing I want to bring up with these high-density developments, and this would apply to all of them, because they all end up being developed under the HOA. And there's some really good HOAs in the city. Certainly, the Mitchell Street condos, I think, operates under 30 years successfully. What happens down at Stonebridge, I think, operates very successfully. But the one down at Magnolia Oaks is, from what I understand, kind of a nightmare. There's no institutional memory. The city doesn't understand what the HOA was supposed to be. The developer's gone, and now this, all the residents there, some of them bought the property without reading the fine print, and all of a sudden, now they're stuck with an HOA. And if you look at what City Grove is, what the City, the Spring Grove property, they're relying greatly on the HOA to maintain all their streets, to maintain the pumps, to maintain water bio-retention.
I just might point out, your comments should be not on an agenda item. They should be in the public forum. But I do appreciate your general comments.
Right. So, given that taken, I hope you take it into consideration, because it's a very important part of this whole discussion.
And I also might point out, as a general matter, not in response to what you said, we are having a public session to see and discuss and have public input on how the zoning code update has been doing on December 16. And that includes all aspects of the zoning code. And so, I welcome your input at that session. And of course, as you pointed out, the policy related to the water neutrality policy is something before, would be before the City Council. But feel free to please come out on December 16 and provide your input.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public forum comments? Seeing none, I think we can go on to our consent items. And these are items that the members of the Commission or the public may ask be considered individually for purposes of considering alternative action, for extended discussion or for public comment. Unless that is done, one motion may be used to adopt all recommended actions. We really have only one consent item today, and that's approval of the Planning Commission minutes for November 4, 2025. Do we have any comments or discussion from our fellow commissioners? Any comments from the public? If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the minutes.
I motion to approve the minutes from 11:04.
Your microphone, Commissioner Covell.
I motion to approve the minutes.
That's our, that's our staff consultant for purposes of this discussion tonight, so...
Consultant of what nature?
It's our city attorney.
We'll get to that when we have the item on the agenda.
It's our city attorney, Todd Laishman.
The city attorney. You're welcome. So, do we have a second for approval of the minutes?
A second.
Okay. Call the roll, please, Madam Secretary.
Commissioner Covell?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
And Chair Warner?
Yes.
He wasn't here. Does he have to recuse himself?
Yeah, maybe you should recuse yourself for a few seconds.
Yeah. I, excuse myself.
No, sorry.
Okay. Just note that Commissioner Lopez recused himself on that. Okay, that's approval of the minutes. We move on to public hearings. I want to just mention a couple things here before we get to the public hearing on this item 5.1. When there is public interest, as there is in community interest, in an application before the Planning Commission, we strongly encourage participation and input and comments and discussion on such an item. But we do so based on the understanding that everyone will be civil, polite, not attack people personally, not engage in counter and contrasting discussion, attempting to have a discussion. The purpose is for you to provide your comments and input to us as Planning Commissioners, not to engage in debate with anybody else in the audience. And again, the model here is to be civil and to be polite, but also have an opportunity to get across your points precisely, factually, so that we can hear and understand them and take them into account in our discussion on the merits. So with that in mind, I'd like to also ask if any of my fellow commissioners have had on this item 5.1, any contact with any of the parties or the applicant that are involved in the merits of the agenda item? Anyone want to comment in terms of whether they've had any comments? Go ahead, Commissioner Covell.
Hi. I had an ex parte meeting per, with the applicant. He requested a meeting with me, so I obliged with the understanding from a meeting with Mr. Laishman up there, what my role is. And I mainly listened to his presentation and asked a few clarifying questions. I did not discuss the merit of the project. It was more informational, catching me up, since I think the presentation he had given in January, I was not really present for. I did, just want to say that I did watch the whole January 21 presentation. Another meeting that I had, that I think for transparency's sake, I had a meeting with, a Zoom meeting with Director DeRosa and Planner Yanisak.
Just to clarify, those are not ex parte.
It's not ex parte, but I think for staff and just, and Todd was also in the Zoom, and they went over my questions regarding the staff report and what the role is for us here. So, just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. Anyone else have any involvement or question or contact with any parties? Okay, with that in mind, let's move forward with the agenda item 5.1. Ms. DeRosa.
Yes. Good evening, Chair Warner, members of the Planning Commission, Director DeRosa. It's been just over 10 months since we first had a public discussion at the January 21 Planning Commission meeting regarding the proposed tentative map for the Spring Grove project. During this time, staff has conducted completeness and consistency reviews. And in July, when the Governor passed a series of trailer bills, it benefited this project by significantly streamlining the sequo process. We appreciate the community's been very engaged in the overall evolution of the project leading to tonight's hearing. This meeting, this evening, is the first formal public hearing on the project, and Contract Planner Mike Janisak will now present an overview of the request and actions requested by the Planning Commission. Mike, thank you.
Thank you, Director DeRosa. Good evening, Chair Warner and members of the Commission. My name is Mike Janisak. I'll be presenting the staff report for Spring Grove. I'm a consulting planner with M Group. And this, for tonight's agenda, this is for the tentative map and the demolition permit. So, an overview of my presentation this evening. I'll give project background, go over the scope of work of the project, summarize public outreach, provide staff's analysis, and provide staff's recommendation. The project is located on Spring Street in between Stockton Street and St. James Court. It is, it consists of three parcels, and you can't see my cursor, but I might have a laser pointer.
I think it does.
So I'll just give, I'll just give directions. So the top of, north is oriented to the top of the screen, so in the northeast portion of the site, you have 1447 Spring. And then, in the front, on the left-hand side of the screen, fronting Spring Street is 1505 Spring. And then the other back parcel is 1515 Spring. So three parcels totaling 2.53 acres. And then, as you see on the inset map, this is two blocks south of Main Street. So, looking from Spring Street toward the site, you see the home at 1505 Spring, and to the right of that, you see the driveway for 1515 Spring. And then in the upper right picture, that is one of the existing residences. That's the home at 1515. And then, the remainder of the site, there's the other home, and then a combination of yard areas and existing vegetation and private landscaping. Here's the plan view of the existing conditions. So you see, there's a mix of gravel areas, driveways, patios, and hardscape areas. And then you've got, you see the outline of the three existing homes. The exterior walls are shown in a different line type. And then, in between the two back homes, there's a line of trees for screening, and then there's another cluster of vegetation. There's sort of that angled, Chamford corner property line, that southernmost property line. Beyond that is a creek, and on the, so that's off-site, but on the site, there's another cluster of trees. Couple more going back, couple more things I wanted to add. So, there's also overhead power lines existing, and there's a garage and a couple sheds, various accessory structures. And then to the top of the screen, along Spring Street, the combined frontage of 1505 Spring and the driveway for 1515 is 66 feet wide. The general plan land use map, the site is shown in the middle with the black outline. The general plan land use is a combination of high-density residential and medium-density residential. It's, the vast majority is high-density residential, except for the lot at 1505 Spring is medium-density The site is also Site 9 of the 2023-2031 housing element. And that housing element, the most recent, the current one, the currently adopted one, it assumes 68 units for build-out of the site. The implementing zoning districts of the land use are the, correspond to the general plan land use. So the vast majority of the site is a zoned HR for high-density residential. And then there's the small portion containing 1505 Spring, that's medium-density residential. Multifamily dwellings are permitted uses in both the HR and MR districts. And because 1505 is for access purposes only, the HR development standards apply to the So I'd like to run through a few of the components of the application. Before the Planning Commission this evening are two entitlements, the vesting tentative map and the demolition permit. Tendative subdivision maps are required for projects that propose five or more parcels. And the pursuant to Municipal Code Chapter 1616, the final review authority is City Council upon recommendation by the Planning Commission. For demo permit, demo permits are required for demolition of any building or structure. And the authority resides with Planning Commission, and that is under Code Section Then there are also other parts of the application that aren't before the Planning Commission this evening. There is a minor design review that is subject to review and approval by the Community Development Director. And pursuant to Municipal Code Section 1705080B2, new multifamily that's consistent with objective design standards can be reviewed ministerially. And this minor design review was reviewed and approved at staff level and issued by the Director on November 21, 2025. There'll also be a few future actions by City Council. I mentioned the final approval of the tentative map. There would also be a concurrent request by the applicant to seek authorization of the use of the water trolley in-lug fee. And then, at a much later date, there would be a final map that would come before City Council and an affordable housing agreement. There are several state laws that apply to this project, but most relevant to this evening's agenda item is SB 330. SB 330 applies to qualifying housing development projects as defined by the state, and it amends the Housing Accountability Act, and it limits local government's discretion. And specifically, it prohibits local government from denying a project using objective standards or reducing the density using, excuse me. It prohibits local government from denying a project using subjective standards, and also prohibits the local government from reducing the density using subjective standards. The scope of work for the vesting tentative map, the subdivision can, proposes 41 airspace slots for condominium purposes, one 2.4-acre parcel for common ownership by the HOA. And then, in the bottom-left corner, in the red hatching, is a lettered lot, Parcel A, that would contain the Riparian Corridor, not for development. The tentative map also proposes all necessary infrastructure to serve the site. All infrastructure would be private. There would be three private streets, 28 feet wide, and a continuous 26 at minimum as the, I don't have my cursor, but as you enter the site, and then there's, it narrows by two feet to 26 feet in between the first set of buildings. So it would, at minimum, have a continuous 26-foot-wide fire lane. And then, it also has, would have private fire water lines, private domestic water lines, private sewer lines, and private storm drains. And there would also be, at the bottom of the screen, there would be two stormwater facilities. Those would be bio-retention areas that would treat and filter. It would, the storm drains would convey water to those facilities, and they treat the water before releasing it back into the public storm drain. And this project would propose a lift station that would pump all the stormwater back up to Spring Street, where it would enter the public system. The scope of work for the demolition permit includes demolition of three homes. So the three homes are, on the left-hand side, 1447 Spring, the top right is 1505 Spring, and the bottom right is 1515 Spring. Starting with 1447, it was constructed around 1880, and the two on the right were constructed in 1955, both of them. The demolition permit does require, for structures that are more than 50 years old, it does require a historical analysis. And in your packet this evening, Attachments 8 and 9 provide the historical analyses, and they conclude that none of the existing homes are, would qualify or be eligible for listing on any national, state, or local historic register. Specifically, 1447 Spring, which was originally Farmstead, has undergone major renovations in the middle of the 20th century, and of a different style, that have changed the property, so much so that it no longer retains the physical integrity to convey its Farmstead The next couple of slides are just for informational purposes, and they just highlight the components of the project that are, that were subject to the minor design review. So, things like site amenities, landscaping, and architecture, those were all reviewed and verified by staff to be consistent with the objective design standards. And so, per the code, they were allowed to be approved. And so that was issued November 21, and it's not under Planning Commission review. A summary of public outreach and the general review process associated with the project. On January of this year, January 21, there was a pre-submital Planning Commission meeting. It functioned as a study session. It was voluntary by the applicant to participate in. And as was the meeting notice, it was noticed as a regular meeting, but it was a voluntary notice. There were 16 members of the public who gave testimony at that meeting. They expressed concerns regarding community character, noise, site layout, fire access, affordability, building height, tree removal, traffic, stormwater management, architecture, neighborhood outreach, flooding, and preservation of the Riparian Corridor. And then, the Planning Commissioners also provided feedback on a range of topics, including screening, neighborhood outreach, circulation, fire access, off-site glare, providing smaller units, providing community gardens. And all of that has either been incorporated and addressed through project revisions or a written response, and that's all summarized in Attachment 10 in your packet this evening. The applicant also held a community open house on February 20, and at least 75 people were in attendance. And then, this meeting, this hearing was noticed in the Napa Valley Register, and also a mail notice was sent to property owners and within 300 feet. And public comments have been posted to the agenda page. The next two slides, I want to key in on a couple recurring project-issue themes. So one is clarifying how residential density is calculated. This is defined in Chapter 1732 of the zoning code, and it's based on gross lot area. And so that's before any, any public dedications for right-of-way or parks, things like that. And so, the total project site, the gross area is 2.53, and then 41 dwelling units are proposed, divided by 2.53, brings us to the proposed density of 16.2. Water neutrality, this is just for informational purposes. This is not a part of the agenda item this evening. The applicant intends to seek authorization of the ability to use the in-lug fee for water neutrality. That will, that request will go with the map if and when it goes to City Council for final approval, as City Council is the review authority for that fee of authorization. Staff is able to make all necessary findings and verify consistency with the general plan and the development standards in the zoning code. There's a full analysis of consistency with general plan policies in Attachment 5, including the proposed type of residential development and the proposed residential density. And then, most of the development standards pertain to the minor design review, but there are a few dimension, development standards, such as lot size and dimensional requirements that are related to and apply to the tentative map. Those are consistent with the map. And then specifically for the tentative map findings, I won't, I won't go into great detail, they're in your staff report and in the resolutions. But again, the subdivision complies with the minimum lot dimensions and applicable building setbacks of the HR zoning district and the lot design requirements of Section 1632050. And then also, in terms of passive heating and cooling opportunities, the majority of the units are oriented to provide southeastern solar exposure, as well as prevailing up-valley breezes when both front and back windows are open. For the demo permit, the historical analyses conclude none of the existing homes are eligible for national, state, or local listing. And the homes are located in the Mitchell neighborhood, per the general plan figure 7.1, which is characterized by both typical residential lots and a variety of housing types and styles. The home at 1447 was part of a rural character that no longer exists in the residential neighborhood. 1515 is a sprawling ranch that does not... 1515 is a sprawling ranch that does not contribute to the character and is not visible from the existing neighborhood. And 1505 is characterized by diminutive and compact massing and minimal decoration and economical construction technique. And here, just for publishing purposes, here are the full findings, again, also in your staff report and in the resolutions. There's the demo permit findings. For SEQA, the project staff, city staff has determined the project is statutorily exempt from SEQA pursuant to Public Resources Code Section 21086. This is an infill housing development exemption and a full eligibility analysis is provided in your packet as attachment seven. And with that, staff is able to recommend to the planning commission, that planning commission recommend the city council approval of the vesting tentative subdivision map found in attachment one and adopt the resolution approving the demolition permit for the existing single-family homes, attachment two. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions. I also know the applicant is in attendance and has a presentation prepared.
Just want to clarify, would you like to have questions from the commission before the presentation by the applicant?
It's at your discretion if you'd like to be informed by the applicant first.
While it's fresh in our minds, I'd like to open it up for any questions that commissioners may have for the staff on the staff presentation. Anyone have any questions for staff? Seeing none, I have.
I do.
Oh, good. Go ahead.
But you go ahead.
Okay. Well, no, you go ahead. I'll defer to you and I'll, if, I'll follow up with my questions.
Commissioner Koval, your mic, please. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. As you were presenting, I know there's a lot more detail on the slide that was not on the slides as it is in the, in the staff report. So in the pri, when you said private infrastructure, storm drains and all of the infrastructure, private being handled by the owners that will eventually buy the homes. Being that we know infrastructure is expensive. How does the affordable units, the ones that are deemed affordable? How do those residents? How, I mean, how, any of them, but especially the affordable units, how would they address some of these private issues if it's a shared cost? That's one question. Second question, for the historical analysis that was provided, who paid for that historic analysis? I'm just curious. Is that a third-party kind of non, like, you know, what do you call it? Unbiased? Thank you. Report? I know you, you did mention attachment 10 regarding how did public comments get addressed by the applicant? Perhaps he can maybe present that a little bit more thoroughly. I did, as I was, you know, you were talking about it without the bullet points. I was looking at it in the computer here. And it would be interesting to know how those were specifically addressed. And then rural neighborhood, you mentioned when, when you were speaking of the 1447 home in regard to historic, that it was in the Mitchell neighborhood and that neighborhood is no longer seen as a rural neighborhood. Not sure if, how is that determined? Is that, is there a radius that describes a neighborhood that is defined such that one can make that finding objective? Or is it possible that if the radius is larger, that a rural neighborhood can be still what we in the general plan consider St. Helena to be a rural town? Those are so far my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Koval. So in terms of the utilities, those, my understanding is those would be privately constructed and maintained. And I, I believe the HOA would have like membership dues that would help maintain the open space and common areas and the utilities. But ultimately, I wanted to defer to public works director and maybe even the applicant on that piece. And then I don't know if there's a different way the fees are structured based on affordability of the units, but that would be an applicant developer question.
Should we just skip to that answer from you then? There's other questions, but I figure.
So just making sure I'm understanding the nature of the question is how are the private utilities going to be maintained?
In, how are the private infrastructure all items like stormwater drainage, water and, you know, all the utilities that are underground that are privately owned in this housing development? With the goal of bringing affordability, right, with the eight affordable units? How will the families that are living in the more affordable homes, sorry, I don't know. How will they, if say a storm drain costs $100,000 to replace, does the HOA give affordability, like reductions?
Maybe I can rephrase the question. I think it's just a fairly simple question, maybe staff can answer, and that is, how does the affordability qualification and criteria apply? Does it apply only to the, to the purchase price of the units? Or does it also apply to the HOA fees or any other private fees that would be, that the purchasers would be subject to based on the affordability criteria? This may be a legal question as well. Do you have any sense of the answer to that one?
I believe this was something that we actually discussed at the first meeting and I believe that it was also.
Your thoughts?
Pro-rated.
Yep. Okay, go ahead. Just answer that.
Happy to answer, Chair Warner, Commissioner Koval. As it relates to the affordable units, the affordable price is set by the city and there's a calculation that goes into that, including property tax. And what they, in that calculation, they net out the HOA fee. And so that actually reduces the purchase price of the home. And so the, the residents in the affordable units, the price of the home takes into consideration the HOA fee. And then if I could just briefly answer your question about infrastructure, to staff's point and to public work director, Leach's point, all of the infrastructure, sewer, water, storm drain, that will all be privately maintained and owned by the HOA. All HOAs through California are governed by a law, the Davis Sterling Act, and it requires all HOAs to do what's called reserve studies, which basically analyzes all the different common assets the HOA owns and makes, and tries to understand like the useful life of those assets and then creates a calculation that ultimately results in that HOA fee and creates a, what's called a reserve fund to pay for infrastructure over time. And so California, through that Davis Sterling Act, really pays very close attention to how HOAs are governed, specifically when it relates to items like infrastructure that you mentioned.
So could I just, I just want to make sure I'm understanding him correctly.
Okay.
So the H, the cost of the unit is taken into consideration with the HOA fee. However, the HOA fee itself, moving forward, once the units are all purchased, there is no prorated HOA fee. It's just the initial buy purchase price of the unit. Is that correct?
Correct.
So everybody from then on, moving forward, has even distribution of HOA fees.
Correct.
I have a couple of questions.
But I had more questions, but I don't know if he's going to address these.
Let, go ahead. Staff, you had a further response to?
So I have two other questions from Commissioner Koval. So in terms of the HRE, typically the city does require the developer pay for these studies. However, staff independently reviews them and comes with their own conclusions of the, for the analysis. And then the third question you had, attachment 10, I believe that the applicant would be better served to speak to that. And I, I think they probably have some of that in their application or, excuse me, their presentation.
There is one more about the rural neighborhood and how 1447 is seen as not fitting in Mitchell's neighborhood and if there is an objective distance between what is considered a neighborhood.
Sure. So if figure 7.1 in the general plan delineates all those neighborhoods, and so Mitchell does have a defined boundary. And like I, as I mentioned in my presentation, it has typical residential lots and it also has townhomes and condominiums within that boundary. So there's a mixture of housing types, a mixture of architectural styles. And there's not much of a description, but it does describe that sort of variety. The general plan does more broadly speak to rural character, but not specific to the Mitchell neighborhood.
Could, could you also really quickly clarify if anything within the urban limit line is considered rural?
We could research that and get back to you later in the meeting.
If I can, I do kind of remember that within the urban limit, there are fingers of rural neighborhoods that are supposed to be protected in the general plan within the urban limit. But would be great for you to confirm.
Other questions from commissioners? I do have a couple. If, if not, I'll, I'll go forward. Just wanted to confirm that the city fire department reviewed the ingress and egress for the project, separate and independent from the existence of the sprinklers.
Yes, the fire department reviewed the access, the circulation, the turning radii, the fire apparatus turnarounds and ability for aerial access and distance, fire hydrants.
And, and am I correct that the owners of the condos through likely the HOA will be subject to all continuing requirements for vegetation management and for any emergency evacuation requirements the city imposes?
The HOA would, would be responsible for maintaining landscaping. The project is not located in the Wui, so there's, there's not specific vegetation.
There are city ordinances regarding vegetation management generally that apply. I'm assuming that they still would apply to this and the owners.
Yes, those would apply to the project and the responsible party would be the property owner, in this case, the HOA likely.
Want to talk a little bit about the minor design review and the density bonus concessions. There are several that the applicant, according to the staff report, was eligible for. And again, recognizing that the minor design review and density bonus approval are not before us, but I just wanted a clarification as a factual matter on the minor design review that the staff reviewed independently all of the requests for concessions by the, and waivers by the applicant under that minor design review.
Yes, those were analyzed by staff. The density bonus eligibility letter is an exhibit to the minor design review, so that was all analyzed. And just to clarify, they weren't, they were waiver requests, so they weren't concessions. They weren't cost-related. They were waiver requests which are related to physical design constraints. And staff reviewed the applicant's materials as well as the, the plans to make sure that the requests were adequate and to make sure there was a legitimate constraint and that it was the minimum necessary to provide relief for the project.
And again, this is a factual question. It's not in front of us as an agenda item, but I appreciate the, the answer. Similarly, again, just to confirm, as I think we've said a couple of times, the water neutrality criteria for this project is not before us tonight. Is that correct?
That's correct. The authority lies with the city council and so that would just track along with the tentative map when there, when a city council hearing occurs.
Those are all my questions for now. Thank you.
Another question. Do you mind? The objective standards, and I understand there was the word subjective, so my head is kind of thinking about these, these two. And my understanding, as Mr. Leishman, if he's still here, is that the only real purview that the planning commission has, and correct me if I'm wrong, please, is regarding public health and safety, objective standards. And that, I think, Mr. Leishman, you mentioned that you've never seen any of these public safety, public health and safety objective standards actually ever be successful in, in discussion in a housing development. I guess my question, and this was brought up back in Barbara Cott's presentation when she presented a couple of months ago. And I think Chair Warner, you, you mentioned that the objective standards for public health and safety was kind of a really powerful tool in our, in our toolbox. So my, my question for staff is what are the objective standards that you reviewed regarding public health and safety for this project, if any?
Well, I think there might be a little confusion on the health and, so there are, of course, there are standards that are related to public health and safety, but the clarification and the, the guidance regarding the state law have to do with, so the city cannot use a subjective standard to deny an SB 330 project unless they can make a health and safety finding. So unless, so, so we weren't, there's not a separate health and safety review, but for example, one, one standard is, that's objective, that is related to health and safety, is the minimum fire lane access width, which is 26 feet. So that's one example. So fires, health and safety.
So.
That's, yeah.
Just.
It's fairly limited.
Thank you. So I, I guess, safety, also, fire is pretty much one of those ones that, you know, we all think of when we need to like flee something, right? So I guess the, the topics of health and safety, if there are objective standards, it would be interesting to know what health means and what safety means as far as city planning goes, what objective standards you could use in, to apply. So health, I would imagine, just say access to water. In the staff report, it was written here that, I think it was from the, maybe a Nexus study or something, that there was water that is available to, that was determined in the, the housing element writing time, that there was enough water to serve this resident, the residents in this development as well as all the. resident, the residents in this development, as well as all the residents in the town, right? So health, public health would be maybe, I don't know, I might be.
Maybe, maybe I can help you on this. First of all, we already mentioned water neutrality, which is a, a subject to, in terms of.
Water sustainability, yeah.
Yeah, is, is not in front of us. However, you'll note that page 21 of the staff report talks about the various subjective standards that were reviewed, many of which, in my opinion, have public health and safety relationships. Maybe not all of them are directly public health and safety, but if you look at page 21, staff report basically refers to site layout, noise, building height, architecture, fire access, affordability, tree removal, preservation of repair and corridor, as having been reviewed by city planning, building, fire, and public work staff for compliance with applicable objective standards and adopted plans, programs, and policies. And this is part of, again, what's not in front of us, the minor design review, but this is referenced in the staff report. And in addition, the vesting tentative subdivision map, this is again, page 21, was reviewed by city planning, building, fire, and public work staff for compliance with all applicable city requirements related to fire access, traffic, stormwater management, and flooding. You know, just those four, in my opinion, are, definitely have public safety aspects, and they were reviewed as part of the vet, the review of the vesting tentative subdivision map request. So I hope, hope that maybe clarifies your question.
No, so thank you for that, but if I can continue speaking. As far as public health and safety goes, within the, the housing development, I would imagine staff and the planning director and, you know, everyone in their various departments have planning, other city, city planning objectives, planning, city objective standards for public health and safety. So not just speaking of the building itself, but in the larger context of the urban fabric that we have here, for example.
Let me just correct you.
Sorry.
The city standards, objective standards are written as part of the municipal code, and.
Can you please not interrupt me when I'm speaking?
But I wanted to clarify the law on this for you, and our, our city attorney can clarify whether there are separate objective standards, but go ahead.
So I would like to read a portion of this planning commissioner orientation binder. Just to further clarify something, it would be just roles of the public service. At some point in your service as a planning commissioner, you will likely face two common types of ethical dilemmas. The first involves situations in which doing the right thing will come at a significant personal cost to you or public agency, or your public agency. In these situations, the answer is relatively simple. The bottom line is that being ethical means doing the right thing for the community, regardless of personal costs. So thank you for addressing my questions. I would like to finish my question and hear it from staff.
Happy, I'm happy to have the city attorney clarify whether there are objective standards that are not written down anywhere, but go ahead.
I think you're missing my question. My question is a city planning level objective standard, not a zoning code objective standard per the individual. It's like the foresight of sustainability, water neutrality, if you look at just one project at a time.
Happy to maybe have staff answer the question on whether there are any unwritten standards that the city planning staff applies that are objective standards.
Thank you, Chair Warner. So Commissioner Cavell, there, we review the project that is submitted, and we review it against the standards that are codified and, and adopted in the zoning code. And building reviews this, the project against the standards. And many building codes are health-related, right? So the building doesn't collapse, and it has a sound foundation. So those are most certainly public health and safety. But, but I don't review that as, as a planner. The building official reviews that, reviews the project against the building code.
As far as the building official reviews his, the, his or her building codes, they don't review it at a city planning level. So my question is, as far as a city planning level of study.
They do, they do review the plans that are in front of them, that are at a planning submittal level. So those 30% of construction level detail, they review that against the, the building code, and there'll be, the, the project's also conditioned to obtain building permits, unnecessary building permits. So the, when the construction drawings have that full detail, then the building official will review it in further detail.
Yeah, I understand that, but I'm under, the, the question is not just a public health and safety as far as the architect construction and building safety in the California building code. I am talking about the, like, objective standards at a city level, city planning level.
So those standards are under 1716-030 and 1716-040. Those are the objective development standards and objective design standards. 030 is the, the residential district base, base zone standard, so things like setback, lot coverage. And then 040, that section contains all the articulation and the very, the much more detailed design standards, the, the look of the building. And it's, they're crafted in a way that's uniformly verifiable, so they're objective. Many of them are numerical, so they don't, they don't require any subjective judgments by staff.
Yes. I think there is still something we can improve upon, and I'll leave it at that, so.
Other questions or follow-up before we go on with the rest of the agenda item? If not, Ms. DeRosa, what is next for us? Do we have a presentation by the applicant?
Yes, if you choose, you could open the public hearing and do that.
I'd like to open the public hearing at this point in time. Again, I want to be fair to everyone here. I'd like the applicant to recognize that depending on the time the applicant takes in their comments, we may expand the time available to the public. So normally, it's four minutes for each member. We'll allow dispensation for the applicant for a little bit longer, but that may mean that others who have public comments will be entitled to additional time. Thank you. Introduce yourself and, and feel free to begin.
Sinia? Do we have the? Okay, great.
Go ahead.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, Chair Warner, members of the Planning Commission and the St. Helena community. My name is Kelso Barnett, and I'm here with Michael Brewer, and we're from City Ventures. And we're honored to present to you tonight a project on a designated housing element opportunity site, which is exactly where St. Helena has planned for new homes. A project which scale, form, materials, landscape, and site design are consistent with the city's objective design standards. And a project which adds much-needed new homes for young families, first-time homebuyers, and brings more residents closer to downtown to support those businesses on Main Street. Tonight, we're proud to present to you Spring Grove. All right, got the hang of it. But before we do that, please allow me to introduce you to City Ventures, the company for which Michael and I are very proud to work. We're a Bay Area builder and the largest developer and home builder in the North Bay. We focus on infill housing. This is exactly what we do. This is our wheelhouse. Our company was founded in 2009, and from the beginning, we focused on sustainability and green building practices. In fact, the building code has caught up with us, for everything we have always built is all-electric and solar-powered. We use efficient materials, EV-ready garages, and low-water landscaping, and these are exactly the sustainability priorities St. Helena emphasizes. I thought we would share with you some examples of projects we've built around California and the North Bay. We, we're very proud of the projects we build. And if you look at these different projects, these images show the types of communities we build. They, they have timeless architecture, good materials, lasting value. We've delivered thousands of homes across California in neighborhoods just like this one. And it's important to note, we're not a mass-production builder. Every community is tailored to the town we build in, and that's why every project up here looks different. And so we began 2025 in this room, as discussed earlier, at that study session earlier this year, and I thought it would be helpful to sort of go through the entire process to what led to this planning commission hearing tonight. So this project started, actually, in spring of 2024, where we started to study feasibility and analyze different issues that, that related to the site. We, we then tested different concepts and, and did a preliminary design development analysis, which led to our preliminary application submitted on November 5th, 2024, and our formal application submitted on November 22nd, 2024. And these applications formed the basis where we received feedback from the community at both the aforementioned Planning Commission hearing in this room in January and our town hall, just down the street from the project, at the Native Sons Hall in February. This lent, this then led to three submittals and three rounds of comments from city staff. The application was then deemed complete in June, which then led to four more rounds of consistency submittals and comments. And I think now is probably the most appropriate time to recognize and thank both the planning director, Maya DeRosa, and the planner, Mike Janasek. They've been very professional and, and great to work with. And I'll be honest, not that that's made my life easy. In fact, their, their attention to detail, their attention to implementing their general plan, and their attention to implementing their development code, you know, was probably the reason why we had so many different rounds of consistency comments. They were very tough, but also fair. So as Mike mentioned earlier, the design review and density bonus for this project was approved in, on November 21st, 2025, which leads us to tonight. And then, as, as Mike said, there will be further approvals before the city council in January. But as you can see, tonight is the, the culmination of more than a year of technical work, public engagement, and design refinement. So we all know where the site is on Spring Street and its proximity to downtown. This is exactly where higher-density housing belongs. It's a site that's walkable to downtown, schools, parks, and services. Residents can genuinely live here with fewer car trips, which is a key goal of the general plan, and it strengthens the connection between Spring Street and the rest of town. For example, less than a 10-minute walk to the elementary school, five-minute walk to, to Main Street, 10-minute walk to Safeway. I believe that's a 10-minute walk to Taylor's Refresher, which is what I still call it. And so we sort of now, we, we understand the context within St. Helena. Let's further understand the context within the neighborhood. This is looking northwest from St. James Drive and, and Hasty Court, looking at the site. This is looking southwest at the corner of St. James and Spring Street. This is looking toward downtown on Spring Street, and these are very similar to the, the images in the staff presentation, but this is looking directly at the site from Spring Street. So the general plan makes very clear, higher-density housing belongs near the center of St. Helena, and housing supply is directly linked to economic sustainability. This isn't just good for, for housing, this is good for the economy. They're, they're directly interlinked, and this project advances both goals. And this is a really important issue in St. Helena, as many people in this room probably know. St. Helena's population has declined 15% over the past decade, and the student population in St. Helena Unified has declined 32% over the past 25 years. So Spring Grove checks every box the general plan outlines. And as discussed, this is also a housing element site, and the state requires local jurisdictions to put opportunity sites on the housing element, but they need to meet certain standards and qualifications. They need to be suitable for housing, and so this site has, has to have, and does have, the right zoning, infrastructure, and location to realistically support new homes. And the site must align with local objectives, walkability, infill development, smart growth. This is the ideal place for more homes in St. Helena. And this is obviously tied, the housing element in general, but it's obviously tied to St. Helena's housing goals, as determined by the city council. And, and we believe Spring Grove is exactly aligned with those goals. Townhomes add the type of attainable homes St. Helena does not have enough of. They give young families, first-time homebuyers, local workers, a path to stay in town. And more residents near downtown, as mentioned before, strengthen small businesses and help the local economy. So here's Spring Grove. We're looking sort of flipped south is obviously at the, the top of the screen here. And so we've discussed the general plan, we've discussed the housing element, we've discussed St. Helena's housing goals. There's a lot of goals here, and so this is the result. This is the creation. And we've designed a walkable layout with clear pedestrian connections and shared open spaces. Parking is entirely internalized. There are no street parking impacts. We have a connective pedestrian path all throughout the project. Every home can, can access Spring Street. This shows, it's a sketch-up rendering of the current driveway to 1447 will become a, a beautiful pedestrian path, retaining that London Plain existing tree canopy and adding vine trellises. And then along the driveway as the project approaches Spring Street will, will be a seating area and also community open space in the interior with a, with a picnic area that will, will allow residents to gather. And this is the type of housing, townhomes, that really what we call missing, and the slide was in our presentation earlier in the year, but it's missing middle housing. That means two things. One, it's the type of building typology we're talking about, which is townhomes. And it's the type of future residents that we're, that hopefully will be living in these homes, young families and first-time homebuyers that are often left behind in the housing market. And so as we consider the general plan and St. Helena's housing goals and the site plan and the context, we're discussing small-scale attainable housing. And it's 16 units an acre. As, as we've discussed before, the, the density, high-density residential, the, the range is 16 to 28 units an acre. And if you consider what you're allowed to do under state density bonus, where you can basically double, this, this actually can get up to 56 units an acre through state law. But we obviously didn't think that was appropriate. We didn't even think the higher end of that range of 28 units was appropriate for the neighborhood. And so we've developed a project on the lower end. We didn't feel, as you can see on this slide, like mid-rise buildings, like larger buildings would fit within the context of the neighborhood. And so in our view, townhomes are the right solution for this project, not just contextually, but it's aligned with the general plan, and it's the best solution for future residents because, because townhomes, while they're higher density and they're attached, they live like single-family homes, which is the type of housing best suited for young families. So I wanted to talk a little about the architecture, and this goes to what Commissioner Cavell was discussing in her questions earlier, about some of the changes that we have made since our study session earlier this year in January. Throughout the process, at that study session, at the open house, at the Native Sons Hall, through one-on-one meetings and group meetings with neighbors, through emails, through phone calls with neighbors, through next door. Throughout the process, we've received a lot of feedback, and we've listened carefully, and we committed to making meaningful improvements in the areas that adjustments were feasible. And we were very transparent about what we could do and what we couldn't do. For example, there was a lot of discussion about lowering the density. The site was, the, the project was too dense. too dense, but as previously discussed, at 41 units, we are at the lower end of that range, 16.2 units an acre. We couldn't lose a unit or we'd go below that. And so, but the one, the one aspect of the project we could make, in our view, meaningful improvements was architecture. And in fact, I have to again credit Planning Director DeRosa on this. She really pushed this on this. For example, the renderings we're looking at, the elevations on the slide right now, these comply with the objective design standards, and these could have been approved ministerially on November 21, as our current plans were. But Maya challenged us to create a better design for St. Helena. And so within those constraints, as discussed, we made a series of targeted design refinements aimed at softening the buildings, improving compatibility with nearby homes, and enhancing the visual character of the neighborhood. So again, this is what we started with, and this is the current and approved project. And so I can go through some of the changes. We increased the primary roof pitch to create a more traditional residential profile. We removed, if you notice in this slide, there's a parapet wall at the top. We removed that. In our view, that improved roof articulation. It was a cleaner, more refined ridge line. If you notice, we've added some metal roof sheds at key elevations. Those would break up facades. We've increased the level of siding detail throughout the elevations. We added a vine trellis system along garage walls to introduce greenery. We also mixed up the garage doors to better individualize units and reduce visual repetition. And I also want to talk a little about landscape. Obviously, a critical part of any new home development in infill sites, especially in a town like St. Helena, is the landscape plan. Our plan adds shade trees, grapevines, oaks, and native species. We've preserved mature, as I mentioned, along the pedestrian corridor up to Spring Street. We've preserved existing mature trees along the perimeter, and we've strengthened screening for the neighbors. On the north, as we approach Spring Street, we'll be preserving those trees, as I mentioned. We're adding grapevines. We're also planting additional native-specie oak trees. And then the southwest, south and west is the project abuts the St. Helena Park Association, will be preserving and not disturbing the creekside setback and adding fast-growing, but fitting plantings to provide natural screening, like sycamore trees, cherry laurels, and the Western red bud. And again, these are sized appropriately. They're large. They'll start a little larger than typical, and they're fast-growing, and we hope that the screening will come in very quickly. And so as we end here, we've reached the end of a process. We've listened, we've conceived, collaborated, developed, customized, and now we're presenting to you the planning commission tonight, a final plan shaped by St. Helena's values, your general plan, your housing element, your objective design standards, and the community feedback. And we respectfully ask for your approval tonight of our demolition permit, as well as a recommendation to approve the vesting tentative map to the city council. This proposal directly responds to the critical need for first-time homebuyer opportunities, young families. This is exactly what the housing element calls for. The plan, as discussed, reflects the goals of the St. Helena general plan, housing diversity, thoughtful design, and it fits both environmental and economic sustainability. I do want to mention throughout this entire process, we've been grateful for the input, the discussions, the feedback, not just with staff, but with commissioners, council members, neighbors, even when challenging. And we're committed to remaining responsive and collaborative as this moves throughout the approval and permitting phases, and also look forward to being a long-term partner in delivering housing that truly serves St. Helena. So I'm happy to answer any questions and would also respectfully ask for the opportunity to come back and address any potential questions or concerns after public comment from the community.
Thank you, Mr. Barnett. And I'd like to open up if commissioners have any questions for you. Any questions? I have just one clarifying question for you. Are you familiar with this group called YMB Law?
I saw the comment on the website today, yes.
Did you or your company have any role in soliciting YMB Law's letter?
They reached out to us. From what I understand, they're constantly tracking potential projects around the Bay Area and California, and they asked for information about the project. And we sent that to them, but we did not reach out to them.
So you didn't request that they send a letter?
No, no. They reached out to us, asking information about the project, which we responded with.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions. If no other questions, I think it's time for public input and comments. So please come up. I am going to be a little judicious and say that Mr. Barnett was, had about 12 or 15 minutes. We normally limit our public comment to four minutes apiece. I'm going to allow some of you who may wish a couple more minutes of time to be able to do that, allocate it among yourselves. But normally, please keep, try to keep to the four minutes and address the merits or demerits of the application. Thank you. Please state your name before you provide your comments.
Wayne Leong, 1145 Crane Avenue. First of all, I'd like to present to the commission and to the city.
Could you speak a little closer to the microphone?
Yes, I would like to present to the commission and to the city staff 133 signatures that were collected the early part of this year, a total of 133 that are for affordable housing, but definitely against this project.
Feel free to share it to us, provide it to staff, and I appreciate that.
Provide it in PDF form?
Yeah, she'll make copies for all of us, and it will be.
Do you make enough copies for everybody?
No.
Okay. That would be great, and then I can attach it to the agenda.
Well, I want to thank the commission for addressing this project. I'm sure you all went through the 36 PDFs and the submittal and the 300-page staff report. So I commend you for taking the effort to address the project at that level. I'm speaking to you both as a resident, but also as a licensed architect who's practiced architecture for quite a few years, starting in St. Helena, and then with my sons opened an office in New York. And we've done housing projects throughout the country, Southern California and on the East Coast. And then personally, I've been involved or was involved with the Magnolia Oaks project over 10 years ago. So I take it upon myself, being that not very many people that live in the neighborhood have that background to address a project of this complexity. I can, you know, I can certainly say that with, which, if you examined all the submittals, all the technical reports, and the staff report, this is not an easy project to process. So in order of time, I think I'll I'll read my presentation in order to run through it quickly, but I also have prepared a letter that I can hand out to you that basically outlines what I discussed. I can give it to you now.
That would be very helpful in terms of our consideration. Thank you.
Mr. Leong, if you like, you can hand it to me, and I will share it with the commission.
So taking the opportunity to look at the submittal and reading the staff report, I have to say personally that I've never seen so much effort go into a project that's absolutely horrible. So that being said, I want to start off with my presentation. So my comments focus strictly on the tentative subdivision map, because that is the item before you this evening. Your responsibility tonight is not to approve or deny the housing project. State law already limits that, but to determine whether this particular tentative map demonstrates.
I'd like to let you go on a little bit longer here.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Whether the tentative map demonstrates engineering feasibility, compliance with objective standards, safe circulation, adequate utility design, and accurate density calculations. After reviewing all the files, plans, technical reports, and staff reports, there are several significant issues that remain unaddressed, and in my professional opinion, they prevent the city from making the finding required by the St. Helena Municipal Code and the Subdivision Map Act. The first item I would like to address is the density calculation. Given that 1505 is a medium-density parcel and the other two are high-density, in theory, you can't take the high-density zoning requirements and apply it to the medium-density. So in reality, by merging the two properties, the three properties, it does not give the applicant the right to aggregate the medium-density into the high-density. It still remains a medium-density parcel. So I think that should be clarified of how they came up with the 253 acres, which aggregates the medium-density into the high-density. If you just take the two high-density properties, then you would actually end up with 38 units rather than 41. So that's something I think the staff should clarify. And I don't think the HAA allows the city to evaluate a housing project holistically. Excuse me, let me read that correctly. The HOA allows the city to evaluate a housing project holistically, but it does not authorize the city to misstate parcel zoning and miscalculate minimum density. So I think the staff should definitely clarify that issue. Second item, stormwater design is incomplete. Overflow systems are missing. The civil drawings show multiple bio-retention basins, but do not provide any overflow routing. The staff report mentions a stormwater lift station, which is required, which is a required component of the post-construction stormwater design, but any details of that is missing. So if you actually take a look at the grading plans, when the bio, all the water from the bio-retention seems to come from the landscape. All the streets seem to go to the lift station, but when the bio-retention overflows, it's not going back into the street. It's actually flowing into the creek. So I think that's something that the city should address. So let me itemize some of the items. There's no high-flow bypass, no overflow riser, no discharge routing, no connection to the storm drain system, no erosion control measures, no emergency spillway evaluation, no engineering design for the private stormwater lift station. I'll elaborate on that lift station. That lift station is going to be taking water from all the adjacent parcels off of Spring Street, all the street, all the private streets on that property, and it's flowing to this lift station. And who's responsible for managing the lift station? The homeowner. And if that lift station fails, we have a disaster. Does this lift station have a backup generator? Because you know, when the water is flowing, usually the power is out. So I want to make that statement pretty clear. The tentative map must demonstrate engineering feasibility. Without overflow path, we do not know where the stormwater goes during a 10-year storm. Where does it go for a 100-year storm? In recent years, we've gotten the 100 years every five years. Whether overflow runs toward the creek, we don't know that, but from the drawings, it shows that the bio-retention actually overflows into the creek. Whether it requires CDFW permits, California, whether the structures or drive aisles are affected, whether the lift station can hydraulically handle the surcharge flows. The Subdivision Map Act requires that the map not create flooding hazards and cause substantial environmental damage. At this stage, the maps simply do not show enough information to support this finding. Let me address the emergency access and internal circulation. As I can see, they're not fully resolved. The site plan shows multiple noncompliance with required objective standards, less than 10 feet between the garage and the drive aisles. I measured on the drawings only six and a half feet, meaning if you park your car in front of your garage, only six and a half feet is out of the right of way. No protection, no protected pedestrian crossings across the drivelanes, inadequate spacing for safe-vehicle pedestrian interaction, three-story building requiring safe-fire-code operation clearances. So the staff report states only that the fire was reviewed, but there's no analysis. There's no analysis whether a ladder truck can work there, whether the turning radiuses comply with three-story access, required aerial apparatus setbacks, and also the enforcement of the emergency vehicle access easement. Under the HAA, health and safety issues are the sole basis of denial. It is therefore critical that fire access be thoroughly documented in the public record. At the tentative map stage, this level of detail is standard, and here it is not provided. So the fact that the fire chief reviewed it, I think the city deserves analysis showing how all of these, all of these issues are actually working. I'll go into the tree ordinance, but I'm not exactly sure how the city is dealing with the tree ordinance these days, so I'll kind of skip over to that. And the other very important one is the water neutrality, which we talked about, and how it defers to the city council. But I'll clarify the number. There's a 10,112 gallon per day increase in demand caused by this particular development. I think you could actually look into how that number was calculated and come up with the fact that it seems a bit low. Also, there's no offset programs is not identified, retrofit locations are not provided, no enforceable water-saving measures are specified, and no agreement has been approved by the public works. So that's something that will be discussed, obviously, with the city council. I'd also question whether this project actually qualifies for the CEQA exemptions. It affects, one of the things identified in the biological report is that there is a riparian habitat along the creek. It causes potential significant hydrology drainage and biological impacts. I think that's a huge one. When you, a simple person looking at the drawings can see that that's a huge impact, because you're creating virtually what was two and a half acres of pervious surface into now two and a half acres of impervious surface. And obviously, everyone's concerned about the traffic noise and emergency access. So I'll skip through the HAA and SB 330. That's something that one can actually dive into and not come out of. I fully support housing, especially well-designed, well-integrated infill housing and strength, that strengthens our community, but the tentative map before you does not yet demonstrate. First of all, I would like to accurately First of all, I would like to accurately, do the accurate, do the density calculation accurately, or clarify, complete stormwater and overflow engineering, fully resolve fire access, compliance with the three ordinance, require water neutrality, legally necessary subdivision findings. These are not subject opinions. They are objective requirements under the Subdivision Map Act and the municipal code and the city's own adopted standards. For these reasons, I respectfully request that the planning commission not recommend approval for the tentative subdivision map at this time. Instead, the applicant should be directed to provide corrected density analysis, complete stormwater overflow routing, detailed fire access compliance, three ordinance documentation, and a viable water neutrality plan. Once these technical deficiencies are resolved, the city will have a complete and legal defensible basis to move the project forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
If you need any more letter.
Okay, other, other public comments? And we will need to stick to four minutes now. Mr. Leong, though, did, I think, a good job of using up the, the extra time, which is fine.
Zinnia, is it possible to send around the signed signatures so we can just see it? Like, just curious to see who signed it.
Go ahead, please, state your name.
Catherine Lazzar, 1563 Spring Street. I'd like to take the conversation in slightly a different direction. While I can't stand the project, and I think it's a complete disaster for this town, that has been fully articulated already and continues to be articulated, so I'll leave that one aside. But however I support, it's, I support the fact that it should not exist here. But I'm concerned about something else. My husband and I work in the wine business, and anyone today would know that the wine business is under siege. The wine business is the primary, is one of the primary employers here. And as I understand it, what we're looking at with this project is housing that none of the people that we employ, none of the people that we work with could afford to be part of that, even those eight afford, quasi-affordable housings. And quite frankly, I am worried. There's currently on Zillow 75 or 57, or I don't know, houses for sale, and the number keeps going up or being at a high level. I am concerned that this project will end up being a whatever color elephant in the middle of our, our beautiful little town because there will be no one other than second homers, you know, that will be able to buy them. And there was discussion in some of these earlier presentations and that there should be some way to only have this be housing for people who work here and live here, not for people, I, I have said this before up here, we're bounded by two people, two houses where there's a lot of vacancy, and it's lonely. So I am not looking forward to having more of that in this town. I understand the arguments made by the folks here, but quite frankly, anybody who works here and lives here cannot afford, or tries, wants to, the people that work in the industry that we're in, and many of the tangential related industries that feed products and services and all that kind of stuff into the wine business, cannot afford not only not to live here, but to shop here. You know, they use Safeway, well, you know, sunshine is dying on the vine, we're very concerned about that, but that, that's neither here nor there. They can't afford to live here. They can't afford to shop here. They have to go down to Napa, to Grocery Outlet to shop. That's where everybody goes. So I'm just saying that I think that this commission needs to look forward. You're, everything we're talking about looks backwards, you know, so we're not considering the, what's going to happen to this valley over the next five to seven years in terms of considering this housing project. I think it's a great threat, and I think this particular project is an example of the existential threat that this valley has to the businesses and the well-being of the whole valley itself. So I recommend, if you can't stop it because of all this stuff that is, exists and has been done and all these things, then at least make it something that people can't, that second homers can't, can't own. Because that is just going to make this town dead again. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
I'm Pat Friday. I live at 1430 Wallace Court. And my comment basically is about the water runoff. I'm on the downside from Spring Street, and we have a lot of water runoff that comes from Spring Street down to Wallace. Also, if this water retention system is going to empty water into the creek, you folks on the commission should know that last winter, if you didn't see it yourself, during the heavy rains, the rain came down the creek into the ponds. I went out and took pictures over the Mitchell Street where the culvert goes under the street, and there was about 18 inches of space. That's all. Now, we've never flooded over there in anybody's history that I was able to gather in our community, but I would imagine more water going into the creek is a problem. Last year, we, because of that, we had the ponds both dredged. The city is responsible for the pond that comes right off the creek on the north side of Mitchell. And for some reason, which I've never quite understood in my research in our HOA, the HOA dredges the South Pond. So both ponds were dredged. You can go out and look at them now and see how nicely the South Pond was dredged. The North Pond was barely dredged. There are mountains of silt still there in the runoff. So I think this water retention is a real issue. And the other thing I wanted to bring up, and I mentioned this to Mike, and he did respond, there is a big oak tree right on the border of Spring Grove Property and the HOA property off of Mitchell. And the water retention troughs are located right over the roots of that tree. Pacific Tree Care came to look, and Jake Schneider gave me information saying that any damage to those roots within 15 feet of the trunk of the tree would kill the tree, and they really need 25 feet from the trunk of the tree to make sure that tree is okay. If that tree dies, two units are going to get smashed. Okay, so there's some responsibility and some considerations there I'd like you to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from the public?
Chris Howell, 1563 Spring Street. I just want to say that I'm very aware of the amount of work that's gone into developing this project on the part of both the developers and our planners who have worked, you know, put hours and hours and hours of work. It's, it's clear that this project absolutely conforms to the standards that, at least that we've been able to discuss in, in the project applicant packet. It is true that our fire commissioner didn't himself, our fire marshal didn't, didn't review. This, this is referred to Sacramento for a third party, and I, I think some of you know this, and that's just the standard of procedure. I think what we see here is a whole set of regulations and, and methodology that is handled largely by non-residents of St. Helena. And that we conform with code, both state, city and, and everything, but I think we could honestly ask ourselves, where are we going here? How did this, these two parcels ever get designated high density? That's, I think, a pretty interesting question, but it's clearly one that happened publicly within our community, and nobody was standing up at the time that happened. We're talking, we're going back more than a decade here. I think, second of all, I think all of us who live in the city know that we need affordable housing. We need housing, it's desperate. But at the same time, the projects being proposed can't realistically provide housing to people who work and live in this community. And nobody's willing to address this. So while we are all checking the boxes, and I think we all have our specific interests, the truth is, we're not looking out after our community. I think that's the essential point. The process is not working. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
My name's John Mullner, and I live on St. James. I'm coming in from a different viewpoint or perspective. Has anybody, city staff or whomever, looked at any of the financial information relative to this project? I'm not quite sure whether that's your process or not, but nevertheless, I spent about 40 some odd years in banking, part of which was in construction financing. And we always looked at the financial statements of a company that we're going to be doing business with to ascertain whether they in fact can do the project. And in the event that it fails, is there a secondary source of repayment? And if there's not, the city has to take on the burden of either demolishing the project or finishing it out. Is the city capable of doing that, given our current financial posture? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
My name's Clark McCormack, 1451 Spring Street. If you gave this project a design challenge to five architectural firms to come up with, with, with their best efforts, I think we would come with several that would be much better than the site plan, planning, architecture, and the final decision that's been created here. Now, we're going to, now you guys are not talking about subjectivity, but this is a very poor design. The site plan is horrible. The layout, on the ground, the buildings, the row buildings, the garages within, horrible. They'd come out with a good project. It could be a good project. I think it's a square peg in a round hole. They have the acreage, they forced themselves to find something that would fit into this, and they managed to stuff it in there. They deleted density to make it work. Had they, they could, I mean, they've always said, you know, with the builder's remedy, with this SB 330 and the HAA, the Housing Accountability Act, I mean, they, they really, it's, it's, you guys aren't on a level playing field with these guys. These guys have, they have all the leverage, all the leverage. And so, as Maya had said, that she could regulate color. There's nothing you can do to regulate the footprint of this thing. So I'm going to go to emergency access. I'm a general contractor incorporated. There's a small, I call it a baby hammerhead that can be done in less than 300 foot of access. I think the radiuses and all of this fire truck stuff are really small. I met with John Sorenson in January at the firehouse, he and one of the Czech guys, the guys that does the walkabouts and did all the figuring. And here we are, I didn't have a ruler or anything, we're sitting in the field by the snare, and I'm going around the plan and the ladder, and they're dragging the hoses around the building. And John says, oh, no, it meets the code, it meets the code, it meets the code. I don't think it meets the code at all. And if we laid out cones on a, on a flat surface in the shape of the entry, the thing, and, and you take their big trucks, now the little trucks, they're short wheelbase, and run those in, now let's have a Tesla catching fire in one of those garages. I have a, a friend who is number two in the Phoenix Fire Department. His house, when he was in the house, firehouse, they were the second busiest fire station in the United States. What do they do with Teslas? They put them in dumpsters and let them burn. You have a test of fire, so they're going to put in charging stations in all the garages. Oh, we have a test of fire. And now we're going to deal with that, and we're going to mitigate that. And I'm not challenging our fire department, their trucks, they'd go out at times and be out for 36 hours. And I'm talking about guys that are dealing with drugs, murders, fires, all this stuff. I think the, the circulation and the emergency access to this thing is horrible. And I wasn't going to say this, but I'll say this, if you had a horrific, like an active shooter in that deal, I don't know how the police department would deal with it. It's a compound. You have narrow corridors. I don't know how you deal with it. It's horrible. A neighborhood's one thing, guy jumping fences and running away. This is a compound. Going from there, the drainage that's been discussed, the bio retention's going to be overwhelmed and flow, won't work. Water neutrality, we talked about that. Let's go to the HOA. I'm, I'm really not sure what fees are.
Let's try to finish.
I'm sorry?
Please try to summarize and finish up.
I'll do that.
Thank you.
HOA, what are the costs for an HOA per month? So let's take the cost of this thing per month. It was stated at 1.2 million in January. So that's at 5% loan for 30 years is $6,700 a month. And now this with the tax, $12,000, $1,000 a month. I don't know, insurance, 400 a month. HOA fee, 500 a month. We're getting up to like nine grand a month to live there. And you haven't bought groceries. Talking about affordability.
Again, please, please finish up, summarize.
Talking about affordability, who's going to be able to live there? And I take your point, that it's, this is, I'm not opposing, and I have the house, 1451, surrounded by this thing. Ooh. How about you? Oh, one more thing. Had conversation in January with one of the councilmen.
Yes, please, one more thing.
Councilman, I won't mention the name, and he said, glad it's not in my backyard. And that's a fact. And I bet it's true for all of you. Oh, one more thing about character. You, you say that character, no, one, this is the, this is the bottom line for the whole deal. You say that character's subjective. Your character's going to be judged. Your, that's different, isn't it?
Thank you for your comments.
I keep going back to the, bringing up the objective standards.
I'm sorry, did you already speak?
Yes, but I'd like.
You don't, you don't get another chance, sorry.
I can see my four minutes to waste.
Well, how about keeping it at two minutes? Because we need to keep moving along.
This is very quick. So it's obvious.
Okay, two minutes, keep it, keep it snappy, because.
It's obvious, if you look at the site plan, that 41 units does not fit on this parcel. It's crammed in there like sardines in a can. What that means is that you cannot apply the standard objectives to this project because What that means is that you cannot apply the standard objectives to this project, because this is an abnormal project with densities that does not fit the site. So to apply the rules, as an architect, the code is the minimum standard that you operate to. So to apply the minimum standards by the objectives, that does not fit this project, because it is, does not, it's an extreme project, so you have to have extreme standards.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments? If, okay, go ahead.
Hello, Dan Hale, 1851 Madona. I can appreciate that we find ourselves at the intersection of several significant forces this evening. The project before you seeks to insert itself into the fabric of St. Helena, which is a lawful endeavor in principle, but how it proceeds requires a rigorous understanding of the limits and responsibilities embedded in both state law and the duties of the Planning Commission. The staff report dictates, or dedicates considerable space to distinguishing what is within your purview and what is not. And I respect those boundaries. However, it is critically important to examine, understand, and scrutinize the evidence upon which you are entrusted to base your decision and cast your vote. I would second Wayne Leong's comment that the density calculations here are not clear or the methodologies that allow you to calculate it in the way that it is. Because of the third lot not being high-density residential, as applied to other places in town, when you develop a parcel, you're required to meet the minimum density at that parcel. This one is kind of casting that aside for the convenience of allowing something to develop in the high-density in the back. So I think you're either, you have to find a path here that allows you to do that, and I don't think that's been demonstrated. Because you either calculate it based on the back high-density, and then you have, then you're left with explaining why you didn't meet it in the medium-density parcel at the front that you've demolished. Basically, the things don't line up. So, within the staff report, there's also an historical analysis which is allowing the demolition. There are multiple areas in that report that don't align. I've submitted several graphics demonstrating these inconsistencies, and they're all pulled from the staff report and the historic reports. While we may come to different conclusions on, or feelings about aspects of municipal code, I recognize that these are the guidelines under which we have to operate. When a historic report thoroughly documents a site, its defining characteristics and the history of its development, often in great detail, as this one does, and then swiftly dismisses the relevance of the very information that it presents, and it presents a conclusion that's askew to the substantial material provided, it becomes difficult not to question the logic or dig deeper into the evidence behind the conclusion. And if you take the time to do so, you'll see that the evidence does not support the Before we, as a town, discard what is clearly an aesthetic and character-defining element of St. Helena, which our general plan cherishes and defines, I think it's imperative that we have examined the matter as carefully and methodically as it deserves. I'm not opposed to the evolution, redevelopment, or improvement of this property, but framing this proposal under the banner of housing and not discussing that the housing in question doesn't serve the need or is, and I think the ready assumption of a lot of people, when you use the word "housing," you're talking about affordable housing. And eight units that are then required to pay the...
Please, please wrap it up, summarize.
Yeah, I'm almost finished, thanks. Required to pay the market rate HOA fee, and as some of the numbers thrown out, it's pretty clear this is not an affordable housing project. I think it's your responsibility to distinguish between the arguments presented and to operate within the guardrails that appropriately constrain your decision-making. I think that bar is appropriately high, and I don't think we've yet met it to bring this, to push this project forward. I respectfully ask that you take the time and consideration necessary to shape this project into a more harmonious form that fits the character of this town. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you for your comments. Other comments?
Mary Stevenson, I'm speaking as an individual, not representing any group. I thought Clark said it really well, that this is fitting a square peg into a round hole. I agree with a lot of the comments that have been made, and I hope that the Planning Commission and the city as a whole can refine this project. But I know the reality of this is this is going to get built. We don't have any way of stopping this from being built. And shame on us as a community, shame on our state and all the other communities for not building the housing that we should have been building for the last 20 years. And that's what's put us into this situation. So I'm hoping that we can make this the best possible build and get more people from St. Helena living in it. And I think there's a way to do that, and I think that there's a way that we can ensure that 50% of these new units would be purchased by local families, that would be first-time homeowners. The sell price of the eight affordable units would be $700,000 to $900,000 in the current AMI scenario. And that would require down payments of up to $180,000, which is not likely attainable for anybody who's making $140,000 to $170,000, which is what the income is for those, for that AMI quality. But most of those people could afford an 80% 30-year mortgage. So the challenge is not the mortgage to income, but it's the cash down payment. I've run some numbers with a couple of mortgage brokers, and to show that with the cooperation of the city and the developer and a housing nonprofit, silent seconds could assist in the down payments. Beyond these units, this could apply to up to the units costing $1.2 million. They could have, be affordable with the right financing. This could mean that at least 20 of these properties could be purchased by homeowners, local families, local working families, that make between $140,000 and $220,000 a year. The eight affordable units could be, the seconds for those units could come from the city's Affordable Housing Fund. The way this works is there's a fund that provides silent seconds that covers the cash down payment on the houses. And in exchange for that, the housing have a deed restriction on them. The market rate units could be, there could be a nonprofit revolving fund that's set up, that lends down payments with a 20-year deed restriction and a payback plus a percentage of equity. And because there's not government funds in the market rates, purchase could be restricted to local families, essential workers, or any way that you wanted to do that. City Ventures is aware of this concept and is willing to discuss it, and I would like to request the city the opportunity to do just that. I know this doesn't have anything to do with what you're talking about tonight, but I think the reality is that we need to figure out how we can make this project the best it can be with everything everybody said, and then make it so that local homeowners, we can have local people living in the homes. I think, I'm really, you know, how many times have I stood up here and said this, but we have to start being proactive in the way housing is created in St. Helena. And we have to make the best of these projects that are currently here, and then spend our time developing better housing developments in St. Helena that will serve our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments, public comments? If not, I think I would close the public hearing at this point. With my fellow commissioners and staff, I'm comfortable with these comments fresh in our mind, addressing them at this point, or we could take a break, or we could go through as many of them as we can and then take a break, because I know everyone has been very polite and patient as we've gone through this. My fellow commissioners, shall we keep going and get some answers to the questions raised here?
I'm okay to keep going.
Okay. I've got, I'd like to begin with a couple that I think are very straightforward from Mr. Leong, and maybe we'll have some help from staff as well as from Mr. Leach on this. First of all, on the density calculations issue with respect to the MBR parcel, does staff have an answer to that, or do we have an answer from our legal counsel?
I can answer that one, Chair Warner. So if you were to quote-unquote "net out" the 1505 parcel, which is .14 acres, you would be left with approximately 17 units per acre, which is actually more in compliance with the allowable range.
So would that mean that it would still be within the range for the 41 units?
That's correct. So the allowable range is 16.1 to 28, and so the proposed density is 16.2. If you were to, which the zoning code does not allow us to net out portions of the project site, it's a calculation of gross acreage. But if you were supposed, suppose you were to net out the front parcel, it's .14, and so it would be 41 divided by 2.39 or 2.4, and you'd get approximately 17. The denominator would decrease, and that would actually increase the density more to the middle of the allowable range.
Okay, very good, thank you. I want to talk about stormwater overflow design. I want to note that some of the proposed conditions in the draft resolution would address stormwater, including backwater prevention devices, stormwater quantity, stormwater, stormwater water pollution prevention plan, plans that are prepared in accordance with the latest edition of the Bay Area Stormwater Management Agency Association compliance manual, and then basically, prior to building permit issuance, this applicant shall demonstrate that all proposed stormwater facilities comply with our city code provisions. I'd like to ask staff and Mr. Leach to address, therefore, whether the issues raised, I think by Mr. Leong, on stormwater overflow design being incomplete, how you respond to that criticism?
Yeah, I would say that the condition 54 in the conditions of approval that are part of the resolution states that prior to building permit issuance, the applicant shall demonstrate that all proposed stormwater facilities comply with the municipal code. Excess concentrated drainage shall be contained on-site or directed to an improved drainage facility. Drainage improvements for runoff shall be engineered to minimize erosion through the use of rock culvert inlets or outfall energy reducers, the correct location of culverts, et cetera. So that, one condition is basically saying that it has to comply with our standards. Whatever detail is not depicted on the current plans would have to be depicted as part of the building permit process.
So that would be a condition of any approval of the maps tonight, would be that those, that condition 54 and the other conditions that would have to be complied with at the time of...
Certainly.
Of...
Building permit.
Building permit. I think you'd like to answer, too?
Eric Janz, Assistant Director of Public Works. My director asked me to step up here just in case he needed me for backup. I think he's actually nailed it.
Okay.
So I don't have anything else to contribute.
All right, very good. I wanted to address the fire and emergency access requirements. I'm pretty knowledgeable on them, based on...
Before you move over to the storm drain, can I just...
Yeah, you'd like to follow up on the storm drain issue?
Yeah. On the storm drain issue, thank you. If the lift station fails, who is accountable if, say, another property is flooded or other properties are flooded off-site? Is there a liability issue for the homeowners?
Certainly, I would lean on our legal counsel, but drainage law would dictate that it's the responsibility of the homeowners' association.
That's my understanding as well. Again, we're not here discussing liability in terms of actually a legal action or cause of action, but I think that's probably correct, that basically the city is not liable for that.
I understand the city is not, and I represent the community, and if the owner, owners of this housing development are a part of the community, then I just wanted to get that clarified.
I'd like to move on to the question on fire and emergency access requirements. You know, I'm familiar, as I said, with some of the provisions in the application, and obviously, the building code and fire code would apply. There was some mentioned that somehow they required 10-foot garage to drive aisle clearance is a violation of code, as well as some other criticisms that the building access for aerial apparatus or laddering requirements are net met, not according to code, and that pedestrian crossings are not protected according to code. Have any response to that from staff or the city?
Sure, I can address that. Alec Widler, Fire Inspector. Thank you for having me, commissioners. Let's, there's a lot of them, so can we start one at a time and throw one at me?
Sure. First is three-story building access.
Three-story, okay. Yes, so the requirement for that is that the drives are at least 26 feet wide to adequately fit our aerial vehicle. The proximity of the building is required to have, be located not less than 15 feet and not greater than 30 feet from the structures, which it achieves that in all aspects of the drive there. The corners of the turn radius has to be 30 feet, which they are shown to be that on the plans. There's no need for hammerhead turnarounds, because the way the streets are laid out, they're basically laid out like hammerheads, so there's plenty of adequate turning capabilities for the aerial. The width of the drives, as they mentioned, is 28 at the start, and then it pinches down to 26, which is the standard for those drives. As far as the access, the fire code does not require two separate accesses, as long as the buildings are fully sprinkled according to the standards of the fire code, which they will be, otherwise it will not pass. And it does say 30, is the number of dwellings, if it exceeds 30, shall be provided with two separate and approved fire apparatus access roads. However, there's an exception directly underneath that. It says, where there are more than 30 dwelling units accessed from a single public or private fire apparatus access road, and all dwelling units are equipped throughout with an approved automatic sprinkler system in accordance with Sections 903, yada, 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 access from two directions shall not be required. So we're leaning on the California fire code.
Great. One more was this issue of the garages not having a 10-foot, quote, "required," end quote, garage to drive aisle clearance.
Sure. Chair Warner, sorry to interrupt.
Yes, please.
Alec and Chair Warner, that's actually a zoning standard, and the applicant has requested a waiver, and that's in, if you look at Attachment 6A, the density bonus eligibility letter, that's received a waiver for that dimensional requirement.
Okay. Let's see, I had a couple, I'm not sure who to address this to. Thank you, Alec, for that.
Is, sorry, is the waiver a public and health and safety issue?
No, it's just a dimensional requirement and a zoning standard.
Sorry, so if they're waiving the width by reducing, I'm assuming reducing it?
It's not a width, it's a distance between the garage and the private street.
A distance between the private garage and street.
That, again, maybe I'm confused. This, the suggestion was that this applied to a 10-foot garage to drive aisle clearance.
Correct.
Is that different? Is that the same thing you're discussing?
Drive aisle includes public street, correct. Yep, same difference.
I guess the question is that this is a private street, right? So then that...
Yeah, so drive aisle is used, so it's more generic, so it includes private streets. It's a, it's a design standard for the buildings.
Just so that I understand, the design standard for this clearing, this distance, is it to keep... is it to keep clearance for emergency vehicles, or is it not, this is not that?
No, it's not a fire access standard. That's correct.
Okay. Okay. Let's continue. Hold, hold on. Well, you'll get a chance if you have any further comments. In reviewing the tree ordinance, is that an ordinance that applies to the, the building permit, or is that just simply an ongoing requirement?
Sure. So we refer the application out to the city arborist, who's a third-party consultant, and the tree ordinance only protects trees in the public right-of-way, and as there are no trees proposed along the street frontage or proposed for removal, there's no applicability of the, the tree ordinance. In other words, a tree ordinance does not protect private, trees on private property.
Okay. I'd like to turn to Mr. Hale's comments on the historic preservation, and actually, I did have a chance to, to, even though those comments came in late, I did have a chance to, to read them beforehand. I appreciate that he is contesting the historic preservation consultant opinion as to changes in these, these structures over time, and whether that means that they're no longer subject to historic preservation standards. But does staff have any comment on Mr. Hale's criticism? It, it's part of the record. You know, it's an issue of what's substantial evidence for the record for, for what we do. We've got a historic preservation expert who basically provided a review, but you may have heard Mr. Hale's comments on that. Any comments from you in terms of your review of the, of this issue?
We've, we are trusting the, the historic preservation expert that wrote the report and their analysis and the evidence that they used in the report versus the public comments on the, on the evidence.
And again, I appreciate that Mr. Hale is disputing the, some of the factual assertions regarding the, the actual history of the structure. Again, that's part of the record, and that'll certainly go in front of, of the city council if there's any, any appeal. But I just wanted to mention that, that, that there was an expert opinion involved that would not agree with Mr. Hale, as I understand it. Go ahead, Mr. Rosa.
I would just also add as background, the state Historic Preservation Office has rigorous credentialed requirements to be, to prepare an HRE, a historic resource evaluation, and so while, of course, we welcome comments from the public, we would defer to the registered expert of the subject matter. Thank you.
And I just want, hold, hold a second. Oh, go ahead, Commissioner Lopez.
I was gonna leave it more as a public comment, because just as a commissioner, you know, born and raised here, started as a vineyard worker with my father and everything, and looking at the housing element and everything, I was looking at these details, and I have been a carpenter 30 years and custom home builder, and I was looking at the report, and I looked at some of the woodwork, at first from the pictures afar away, the colonial period, and I go, wow, that kind of looks cool. And then as I zoomed in and I looked at the report, the woodwork, it's kind of like if you get a car and soup it up, right? You get a classic 40s car, and then you start throwing a big engine in it. You start changing the structure, and it was a farmstead house, humble house, and they changed it, and the additions weren't done very well, by the way. And the woodwork was colonial, it wasn't really great. And if you look at who first bought it historically, they kind of upgraded. It was like a starter house, and then from the farst, farmstead, it shrunk, and it changed over time with the windows and all that. And if you look at all the historical wineries, they keep the windows, they might double paint them, but you keep it woodwork, and all those have vinyl windows, the way they added carports, the footprints kind of stayed the same, but as I looked at it and I looked at the evaluation of, of the historical person evaluating, I said, you know what? That's true. It's been changed enough, even though it was started in 1880, the, the switching of lands is to, so I'm not an expert, but I am a builder, and I love wood, and I love using tools, and from hand tools to all those tools, but I, I looked at it deeply, and I thought, is this something that really is historic? And even if you tried to get it to qualify with this, it probably wouldn't go, because after I looked at it more closely, and I asked a few questions, I said, I took it for granted. So I, I was trying to look at everything as a citizen that could contest what we're going through, and I just, I wanted to comment that, and I was gonna say it towards the end, but from my humble opinion, as a carpenter, 30 years in it, being trained by the union and love trim work and love everything, I looked at it, and it's changed enough to where, yeah, it probably wouldn't qualify as historical.
Thank you, Commissioner Lopez. A couple more from Mr. Leon's critique, and then I'll open up for other, further questions from, from commissioners. The water neutrality, we've already addressed. That'll be something that will go to the city council, and issues raised with regard to water neutrality will be in front of them and are not in front of us at this time. The CEQA exemption is a legal opinion. We've had a legal opinion from our city attorney. I think we, we definitely appreciate that Mr. Leon has raised some questions regarding the exemption. I understand he's not an attorney, so at this point, I, I need to just kind of defer to our attorney's opinion. I don't think I need to ask any further questions. We do have the legal opinion on the record, unless staff has anything to add.
Yes, I would defer to our city attorney.
Just one small point. While certainly the legal advice is that the, the project is exempt from CEQA, I want to be clear that it is not, that it is exempt under CEQA Class 32, which is the exemption referenced in Mr. Leon's letter, and that is not the exemption that the project is subject to, it's Public Resources Code Section 21080.66.
Excellent clarification. Thank you so much. Thank you very much. Let me stop there. I think that was, oh, I do, I do want to ask city attorney a question, and again, it was interesting to, to hear, again, comments from the public on, on whether this will really result in more affordable housing or not. Those are somewhat economic market questions that we really don't have in front of us, but Ms. Stevenson raised the issue of whether there are some unique ways to provide alternative financing for purchasers of this home. I just wanted to double-check with our city attorney. It's not something we could condition as part of our review tonight, is it? It's a, it's something that, maybe that's for, for our outside attorney, that we don't have the ability to condition approval of subdivision map on some kind of economic income qualification criterion for the, for the purchase of the homes. Is that, that's, that's just my, I'm, I'm a lawyer, but I defer to our lawyer and expert on this question.
Sir, do you want me to get that?
Yes, that'd be great.
Okay. Chair and commission, that's correct. Aside from the affordability requirements that are described in the staff report and if the project is taking on, the, the commission has no authority to add to that.
On the other hand, to the extent that alternative financing is available for potential purchasers, and, and maybe when City Ventures has a chance to comment, they can comment on that, but I think Ms. Stevenson was referring to something outside the zoning code or our approval. Again, my opinion is nothing in, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, nothing in what we do tonight precludes alternative financing arrangements or efforts by the applicant, or even home purchasers or nonprofits to provide alternative financing to make these, these units more affordable. Am I correct on that as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Those are all my questions, but I defer to my fellow commissioners if you have further questions for the, the staff as a result of the public comments.
Is that a no to everybody else? Sorry. I just always want to make sure everybody else gets to speak.
Yeah, that's okay. If you, any, any commissioner questions for staff as a result of the public comments?
As far as public comment, I, I see the concerns of the community, and, and I think great questions have been brought up, because obviously throughout time, we haven't had enough housing that was affordable, and now we've come to where there's constraints, and I, I just went for an AD, ADU unit training up in Martinez with more restraints being come down, and there was a lot of gray areas that the planning commission could do a lot with, and the housing crisis is, is troublesome, because a lot of people that work our fields, that work our areas, how are we gonna house them? I think that, that it brings up the debate of how, how we could make it work. And obviously, we all know Father Brinkley, that he brought up and tried to raise, and 10 units took 10 years, and they were, obviously, for all the families that needed it, it's been hard for not only city people that work our, our city to keep it up, but our workers, and we're, we're kind of at a, at a place where interesting questions can come up to try to resolve it, to try to at least tap into it. And some of it is, is this new, or only certain amount of units, and who are they gonna go to? It's, it's very concerning. So as a commissioner that's lived here all my life, born and raised on, on the hill, and most of my family and grandparents are in the Catholic cemetery here, and probably be here, these are important issues, and we do, I don't want you thinking that we're up here trying to change our town or do anything. We're trying to do the best for the community, but once, once the buck has been packed, passed down, we're kind of constrained by parameters and, and laws in the triangle that now are coming across the board, so. And I, I've heard all of you, and, and, you know, we, we gotta somehow resolve these issues. They're, they're very important issues, and, and I really, really appreciate you all coming and expressing everything to us, because that's, that's what we need to hear. We need to kind of resolve this from all perspectives.
Other questions or comments on terms of the public comments?
Just a comment. I turned it back off. I share the same concerns about affordability, and as a commissioner that was on the Housing Element Subcommittee, we worked really hard to rezone, to make it feasible to build all the housing that we are required to build in our arena allocation. That doesn't mean that we have any control over whether or not it gets built, and that's really frustrating. And I would like to see all of the parcels that we've upzoned actually be used in the way that we intended when we upzoned them, and have them actually supply housing that our local workforce can live in. I don't think this housing is that. I understand it's all legal and by right, but it, it doesn't accomplish what we need it to accomplish.
Go ahead, Commissioner Cavell.
Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. I really mean it from, I came with an open mind, and I have heard every, each and every one of you, and I, I looked at the signatures, to, to a lot of people's point. I really take this role very seriously, and I don't know if you can tell, this is the planning commission's handbook that I was given by Maya. And I wanted to read just quickly, because I think this is apropos to this situation. And let me read this, and I'll just explain. So the second type of ethical dilemma, and this is under public service ethics, involves those situations where there are two conflicting sets of right values. In these instances, drawing the ethical bottom line is more difficult. If you find yourself faced with a right versus right decision, the following questions may help you come to an answer. Which ethical values are in conflict? For example, trustworthiness, compassion, loyalty, responsibility, fairness, or respect? Second, what are the facts? What are the benefits to be achieved, or the harm to be avoided by a particular decision? Is there a decision that does more good than harm? What are your options? Is there a course of action that would be consistent with both sets of values? Is one course of action more consistent with a value that is particularly important to you, for example, promise-keeping or trustworthiness? What decision best reflects your responsibility as an office holder to serve the interests of the community as a whole? What decision will best promote public confidence in the planning commission and your leadership? So I feel like this is one of those situations where there's two rights, right? I, I appreciate a developer in the sense that I know how long it takes to get a project designed, funded, planning, and, you know, the timeline that he provided in working with staff here, and going through all the codes and the language, and as staff has presented, it does comply with all of the zoning requirements and laws that have been set forth by the state and, 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 yes, all those laws. And then I'm hearing what everybody else is saying here, which is that this other right, which is this project, isn't really fitting the needs or the intent of the housing element and the desires of the community, the character, the general plan, the, all of the other things that people mentioned in, in this. When I think of the housing element and the goal of the housing element in bringing housing and the severe need for housing for affordability and workforce, and I understand your presentation on the middle cla, not middle class, middle, missing middle, sorry, and needing a, a different typology, housing typology of towns, townhomes, and, you know, I just wish in the market that we were in that these were actually more affordable, that perhaps there was, you know, to me, I am an architect, I, I generally would, I would say that these don't feel family-friendly, just based off the fact that I have a family and there's no place for me to watch my kid run while washing the dishes. But that's a very, you know, subjective thing. This might be very family-friendly for someone who has no home and is living on a street. So I keep that perspective. I mean, obviously, they won't be able to afford this, but, you know, again, all those things are in a, what do you call it? Scale, sliding scale. To everybody's point, what, what is difficult for me is understanding the right and right and less harm. I truly am struggling. I, again, came to this meeting with full, open mind. All of the things that are on paper, the words, the codes, they may check boxes, but in practical matters, they, they don't quite align with reality. I worry for those who buy this home, these homes, only for the way that the development has written private HOA. I would personally, like, not as a planning commissioner, or I guess, I guess I can't say that, I would personally worry that these people would be subject to potential litigation and liability. As a planning commissioner, I have to protect the community, and I think it also says protect property value in here. So for me, this is a clear example where we, as a planning commission, have limited purview as far as what, what the state laws, HAA, and, and allows us, and as it is, it is another one of those things where housing element was, you know, this was, the site was selected, and there is a 1880 home. I mean, regardless of whether or not the- I mean, regardless of whether or not the, the work is, you know, as, as, I understand, yes. I totally understand the vinyl windows, you know, but there are sometimes people who take these projects up and restore them and they are beautiful. And that, you know, to a retired carpenter might find this like a really fun project, right? But to that extent, a home that is 1880, I don't even know when St. Helena was founded. This seems like, this is like amazing that it stood. And, and a test of time and, you know, a sign of the changing, the changing needs of our town. And I, I wish demolishing this house would mean that real housing was, was coming forth, that not, no offense to when I say rehousing, I mean, real affordable housing. This is real housing. And I appreciate also the applicant's presentation and what they did to try to improve, provide, you know, sustainable elements, vulnerable takes and all those things. Again, like.
Can you try to summarize? We're, we're running a little bit late here. I understand you've got a lot of comments, but.
I mean, I'm really at a.
Get to our deliberation stage as well as any comments by City Ventures. Appreciate it.
Sure. I guess my closing statement is that I hear everyone's comments. And this is one of those things where I feel like there are two rights. And it brings up the question of then, if there are two rights, what needs to be addressed so that there could be a better approach? And I think December 16th, there is a zoning code, how is this working for you situation? And if you hopefully stick to the end of this meeting on future agendas, I actually have some ideas for future agenda topics that I would love to share. But I again agree. We are using up one of our 12 sites. And yet, the housing is not affordable. So.
Can we, I think you, you said that.
And that is.
Forward.
This part of that is the need to address the laws and the codes so that the objective standards, the zoning codes, the numbers are scrutinized to a level that actually creates better design within objective standards and as well the overall sustainability and environmental impact of St. Helena and St. Helena in Napa Valley.
Other follow-up comments? If, okay. Thank you. I think what we want to do maybe before we take a break here and deliberate, if that's appropriate, is I know, again, we've addressed most of the questions through staff and through city attorney and outside counsel. But does City Ventures have anything that they feel needs to be corrected for the record or be responded to? And let's keep it short and try not to duplicate what we've already responded to.
Yes, thank you Chair Warner for the opportunity. And I appreciate all the thoughtful comments and from the commission and also from the community. I wanted to address first the issue about whether the, the older home is potentially historic. I think Commissioner Lopez had a great analysis of that. Planning Director DeRosa discussed how the office, the State Office of Historic Preservation really requires experts to really be qualified to make these determinations. I, over, over the hill in the city of Sonoma, I served on a historic preservation for seven years. And I, there were many applications that would come before us with historic resource evaluations. And, you know, basically determining that structure that I thought looked historic or seemed historic was not historic because maybe they've lost character defining features. Maybe the historical integrity was compromised as, as it is at this site. And so I fully understand that something that looks historic as it relates to state historic law is not a historic resource. And that's an important difference. And so I understand the concern about that and the questions from the community and from the commission. But, you know, again, this is, from what, from what we understand, one of the best historic experts in Northern California in the North Bay. And she certainly, if you've read the report, it's quite exhaustive.
I did read all of it.
I, I also, would also like to address the concern about affordability. I also understand that, I, I understand those comments and we hear that. And I just want to say a few things about that. One, Mary Stevenson from our town, St. Helena earlier, mentioned that the affordable, the deed restricted units would likely be selling for between $700,000 and $900,000. And that is, that is not accurate. The, the deed restricted units, four of them would be at 100% AMI. Four of them would be at 120% AMI. And the calculation, and it's a, you know, it's a complicated calculation. But those ultimately, the, the 100% AMI will be selling in the low 400,000s. And the 120 AMI would be selling just over 500,000, probably between 525,000 and 550,000. And so, you know, I recognize that that is a significant sum for many, but it is not, it was not the higher amount. In terms of the market rate units, as we said in January, there's a range of units, obviously, between the low 1,500 square feet to the low 1,800 square feet. And we are currently estimating those to sell in the high 900,000s to probably at the upper end between 1.1 and 1.2 million. Obviously, you know, it goes without saying that that is dependent on the market. What I will say is that the median home price in St. Helena, as many people know, is very high. I believe currently the median home price is between 1.6 and 1.7 million dollars. And that's significantly below the median home price. And so while we recognize that is, you know, out of reach of many in our community, it's actually, or out of many in St. Helena, it's, it's much, it's significantly lower than the median home price. And it's actually much more accessible to a larger segment of the community than one might realize. Especially when you layer in Mary Stevenson's idea about raising a fund to help young families who might qualify for that mortgage but might not have the down payment. We've had many meetings, Mary and Jen from our town about this idea. And I think it's a great idea. And one suggestion I had that we were going to talk about at the city council meeting is the fact that the code requires us to dedicate 20% of the units to be deed restricted affordable, which actually turns out to be 8.2 units. And so we've provided eight units and the fractional unit, the point two unit is, will be satisfied through the payment of an in-loof fee. And Mary and Jen has been doing a lot of work on this potential program to raise money to help St. Helena families live in these units through a silent second. And, you know, but they're probably going to need grant funding. They're probably going to need to sort of understand how this program would work and how this program would be managed. And, you know, one suggestion I think our town and City Ventures also had was perhaps some portion of that in-loof fee could go to funding a grant program that would analyze and study and actually execute a plan that would get local St. Helena families in these units. And so obviously, that's what we want as well. We target, you know, we market these homes to first time home buyers, you know, to young families. And, and many of our projects, not just in, you know, larger places like Santa Rosa, but smaller towns in Marin County and Maraga. You know, these have been built and these are thriving communities and we, we know who's living there. And, you know, there's a, there's a project down in Nevada where over 90% of the, the buyers of these homes were first time home buyers. There was a project in Maraga where over 75%, a similar, you know, demographic profile to St. Helena, were first time home buyers. And so I wouldn't immediately discount the idea that this project is not going to be attainable or accessible to the kind of families that need these kind of homes and that live in St. Helena.
Thank you.
I also just had one before, I assume I won't have an opportunity to speak once you begin deliberation.
That's correct. This is your last chance.
Would it, I know this, this may be an irregular request, but considering there are four planning commissioners here tonight with the vice chair absent, I was wondering, would it be possible to poll the commission?
No.
Okay.
He's asking if, before we deliberate, if we can be polled as to what our position is on, on the two resolutions. And I do not recommend that. We will deliberate separately. But I think you may have a question from.
I just wanted, I wanted to thank him for clarifying the pricing because the pricing he just gave is lower than what he provided at the original meeting. And it's better.
Thank you.
Again, we can take a break if we want to. On the other hand, we could power through with our deliberation. And because again, everyone has been very patient through this meeting. What are our druthers? Would we like to go ahead and deliberate? Okay, okay. I just want to also say before we, we deliberate, I want to really echo what has been said by my fellow commissioners about this tough issue of affordability and our community character and everything that we've discussed today. It is very clear that, that what we do as a planning commission is, is very important, is a factor in that, but it's not outcome determinative because affordability of housing is a national crisis. It's a crisis here locally. It's something that has to do with availability of financing, mortgage rates, things like that. Also, I think it's important to note that we, we follow the law and the code. And we follow what is required of us as a planning commission to adhere to the code and the law and the zoning code as it exists. That doesn't mean that the city council can at some point change that. And they may, you know, we've got a, one example, that is a water neutrality policy that, that may be up in front of the city council, not for this, necessarily for this application, but for any changes to that water neutrality policy for going forward basis. But I just want to say that I share what my fellow commissioners have said about absolutely the crisis we have on affordability. We're not going to be able to address that here today with this project in a, in a, in a way other than what's been presented to us. But I think we all, as residents of the community, community members, as, as Commissioner Cavell said, we're very concerned about that. I'd like to point out what our deliberation includes here and suggest that we really follow what we're being asked to deliberate on. There are two resolutions. And commissioners, you have them in front of you. They're part of what we're going to consider. We will consider them in sequence. We'll consider, I think it is the, the MAP resolution first, as I understand it. And I hope all of you have read those draft resolutions because that's what we're deliberating on. The second will be the demolition permit. We are not considering, obviously, the, the minor design review, although we've certainly had those facts in front of us. Those are not in front of us for this agenda. We will not be considering water neutrality because that is not being addressed here. But with that, I'd like to begin with first the, the mapping resolution and ask for any comments, discussion, and maybe even entertain at the appropriate point of motion regarding that one. Is that okay with our commissioners? Start with that one. Okay. Any discussion, comments on, on that before any motion would be appropriate? Or would we like to entertain a motion for that one?
Can we have that on the screen?
Well, it's in your staff report. It's very long. So you'll want to, you look at your staff report. I'd hope you would have reviewed the staff report before. Okay, it's, it's a draft. What will be asked to approve is our, you know, approval of it is only one, one page. But if you want to put the, this is, this might help you. This is the recommendations will be, that's, that's not technically the resolution. That's our recommendation for approval of the resolution. Take the. What? Oh, right. Just saying, Commissioner Anderson's referencing that the resolution we're acting on, the MAP resolution is, is pretty long. But again, as we referenced in our discussion, there are quite a few conditions on that. And again, this, this goes, am I correct, Ms. DeRosa? This, this goes to the city council as well if the planning commission approves it?
That's correct. This is just a recommendation to, that the council approved.
We are only recommending. The demolition permit, though, we do approve, correct?
Yes. You are the final decision making body.
That's an important distinction. The, the long resolution here on the MAP is just our recommendation. It goes to the city council, which will look at it, what we lawyers call de novo. It'll look at it based on the record, but they'll have an independent ability to review it. Demolition permit is directly in front of us. So again, the, this is the recommendation on the first resolution.
Just so that I can remember, I remember you guys talking about conditions during our Zoom. Was the condition regarding using the garage for parking added to this? Or is there any discussion on that?
Well, again, I think the building code, am I correct, will, will apply, including the fire code, which is, is again, part of the conditions here.
If I could ask staff a question to address and then have staff address it? I remember we had a conversation where because the parking is, there is no driveway. You, the number of cars in this housing development, they would be required or could be required to park their cars in the, the garage as a condition, correct? Rather than on street?
That's correct, Commissioner Cavell. It's the intent of the developer to have in their CCNRs that the residents park at least one of, are required to park at least one of their vehicles in the garage so that both, the, the two car garage isn't completely filled with storage, et cetera. So that was not added to the resolution, the draft conditions before you this evening. But I, I think if that's a condition you wish to add, I, certainly that's something that the commission could ask the developer if they're amenable to that.
And that is a condition I would like to ask because I know that was a public comment long ago about parking on Spring Street being an issue. And I would just like to see if there's any way that would require at least parking in the garage.
How, how is that enforceable?
It would be in the CCNRs.
Right, but like, once people actually move in?
So that would make it binding. I don't know if it would be enforced by code enforcement with the city if it'd be fall on the HOA to enforce it, but it would be binding. It would be in the, in the CCNRs for each resident, so.
But if, I guess I'm asking a similar question is, are we suggesting we would impose as our resolution here of approval of MAP, content of the CCRs?
I don't believe that it would be feasible to have a full draft of the CCNRs at tentative MAP phase. I don't, I think that would be unusual. But I, I think certainly you could add a condition to the draft resolution for that specific garage parking.
Just so that I understand, there's a requirement for off-street parking, one, and one on-street parking? Is that, is that a code? Or something with off-street parking?
There would be no on-street parking. There are 11 guest surface stalls that are perpendicular at the entryway or near, nearest to the entryway. But there's no on-street parking for this development because there's, there's not, the private street wouldn't allow for that with the curb cuts and the.
I mean, on Spring Street.
Oh, I'm not sure if, I'm not sure if Spring Street is restricted or not by the city. But I, I think that the parking, the project exceeds the minimum parking requirement.
So let me, let me, let me, let me put a follow-up on Commissioner Anderson's point about this. And I actually have firsthand knowledge, having tried to look and help one of the residents of Magnolia Oaks. One of the things that was very perplexing and difficult about Magnolia Oaks was they included CCRs that appeared to bind the residents of Magnolia Oaks forever. was they included CCRs that appeared to bind the residents of Magnolia Oaks forever to only buy water from a private water well. And I think what Commissioner Anderson is referencing, and again, I, I fully agree that we could impose these conditions that apply to future behavior by the residents. But boy, I'll tell you, when you, when you have things like that that are put into a, a resolution of the city and then the city has no ability to really go out and enforce it in a practical sense, and you're binding people for 30, 40 years or permanently, then you have a Magnolia Oaks situation where basically the, what, what a good thing would have been, would, would have been if Magnolia Oaks residents could have signed up for city water whenever they wanted to. But the CCNRs imposed via city resolution at the time bound them not to. So before we start binding to particular long-term behavioral conditions on this, I would just ask that we think about that and what the unintended consequences might be.
Thank you for that. I, I agree. I understand. I met with Celeste, Celeste, is it Celeste? I didn't realize that that was a CCNR issue. I thought it was a private well ownership situation. So there's an HOA and then like a maintenance HOA. So I think it is, I mean, perhaps I'm wrong, but I'm just asking the question because this was one of the things we discussed in our Zoom with also the legal attorney, that it is possible to, to address parking concerns of the neighbors. This is a, I mean, there's 44 units and no parking except for 11 guest units. So as a traffic study, there's no, or there is a, I don't know. I'm just trying to.
Commissioner?
Yeah.
And, and Mr., your also city attorney Leishman may have some points to make on this. Generally speaking, without, you're making a recommendation, right, to the city council. The resolution is a draft of that recommendation. If you want to add further recommendations, you can. And you can say them however you want, and then they can be considered by the planning, excuse me, by the city council at a future date. And whether that recommendation is that it be, what you want be located in, in a CCNR or be located in the conditions of approval of the map, it, honestly, you can just make any recommendation you want. And I'm getting a slight sense that the applicant may be able to help you out on that.
Wait a minute. We're, we're not talking about the legality of it. We agree that it's legal for the commission to apply conditions like that. We're talking about the wisdom of whether that's prudent to do. That's a separate matter.
I was just saying that you didn't necessarily have to determine tonight where that condition would be placed.
But, but you still would be making the decision that it would apply forever?
No.
If it's, if it's a condition of the behavior of the residents of the, of the, of purchasers of the units, it would be, correct?
It depends on how the condition is phrased.
Well, how, how would you apply a parking condition? What would you say that, oh, we don't really mean it because we know the city won't want to enforce it? I don't want to get into that issue. I'm fine on agreeing that it's legal. Whether it's prudent is really a, a topic for us to decide. But I, I want to defer, and I appreciate what you're saying, but I want to defer to.
Well, and, and I, I guess I can give the legal advice that there's a difference between a public street and a private street. And so certainly you could never, for instance, like a street that wasn't part of this project, the planning commission can't alter it, how it deals with parking.
I, I understand. I'm talking about whether this is a, is a wise and prudent approach as a condition. Because I agree we have the ability to apply the condition. But Commissioner Anderson, did you have a comment?
I don't think that's a condition we should make. I don't think that the city has the ability to enforce that over any length of time. And I don't think that it creates a very healthy environment for an HOA to be policing people's cars indefinitely. Plus, the project already has as many parking spots as it's supposed to have.
But the parking spots are the garage. There aren't actual other parking spots besides the garage.
Correct, but you can't. I, I don't agree that that should be a condition.
Other discussion before we get on to a, a motion?
I just wanted to understand from Mr. Leishman what we had talked about because he said something specifically that made me thought that this was a doable thing. So that's the, I mean, I guess it's legally possible, but then you're saying it's fine.
Again, to clarify, none of us is disagreeing on whether it's legal for us to recommend this as a condition on the private street that the purchasers of the homes comply with the requirement that they park in the garage. So nobody's disagreeing with that. It's just whether it's a wise or prudent thing for us to do in terms of a, of a condition on the, the actual approval of the map. You look, look, City Ventures looks like it wants to venture into this discussion.
I, I'm just happy to add to the, the discussion. All of our CCNRs and all of our developments require the garages, they must be used for parking. And so if you would like to, to your point, I don't know if it's necessary because CCNRs will be reviewed as part of the final map process. And so if you would like to put a condition on the project that the garages must be used for parking, we would have no issue with that and we would accept that because those are already in our CCNRs, which will be reviewed during the final map process. So I just wanted to provide that information.
I understand, I understand you can do that. I, I just happen to share with Commissioner Anderson, based on discussions in a, in a, in a, in another context, that I don't think that would be prudent or, or necessary. So, but commissioners, commission can vote on that and whatever they want.
I'm okay with him having explained that that is already in his CCNR, so I'm okay.
Okay. Other discussion on the, the map? If not, I would entertain a motion on the, the map item?
I, can you, okay. I didn't memorize it.
Take a breath.
I'm freezing. I make the recommendation that city council adopt the attached resolution, staff report attachment one pursuant to a statutory exemption under PRC 21080.66 for approval of the requested vesting tentative map number TSM 25-001, file PL 24-065 for the Spring Grove project. And.
Can let's, let's hold there.
Hold there. Let's do that one. Is there a second?
I second it.
Discussion, further discussion on, on this one?
My only saying is that based on my role and the staff report presented and the laws and the codes, my planning commission role is to vote yes.
If no further discussion, can we, go ahead. You had a question, Senia?
I believe city attorney Leishman had some thoughts.
Oh. To turn, need to turn them on.
Actually, I was just going to mention earlier that you don't have to read the, the full recommendation out loud. You can just say that you move staff's approval, but we've, we're past that point.
Okay. Very good. Okay, could we call the roll?
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavell?
Yes.
Chair Warner?
Yes. Okay, that's the first one. I'd like to move on to the second one, which is the demolition permit. And again, this is, keeping in mind, this is actually within our purview to decide on the demolition permit. I, I want to point out, as I was thinking about this when I reviewed the demolition permit, this doesn't actually get implemented for a long time. It's, it's not until the overall project goes through the remaining processes. So it's not like the, the, these, these homes are going to be demolished before there's an actual project that's approved. But with that said, I would entertain a motion regarding the demolition permit.
I motion that we adopt the attached resolution.
In, in the, in the form as recommended by staff. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Any discussion on the motion? Further discussion?
I just wanted to clarify, with no disrespect with the 1880s, I, I was trying to think of places historical of significance like Abraham Lincoln's cottage where he grew up and stuff. When you see the original footprint of what it, what it kind of was in the 1880s, it seems like there wasn't the love when you, they added a carport, you see it all, you know, tweaked, added it. That's where I started looking deeper into it and looking at what the, you know, historical society would do. So once you, you go and change something like that, it, it would be very difficult because it wasn't documented how it was to, to bring it back. So that, that was my biggest concern from my area of expertise. And that's why after reviewing, I go, yeah, it, it, it can't be brought back because it's something that's been modified and not holds the, the integrity of, of the original outcome. So anyways, I, I didn't quite go into it, but as I looked at the woodwork and everything else that was changed and, and everything, not just windows, but just the total structure and the love put into it wasn't quite there. If they would have really wanted to grab it from the 1880s and keep it that way, then it would have been something to, to keep. And it's, it's just, it all made sense once you look deep into the report. So that's why I think it's a good, good move as far as the three buildings that can be used.
Thank you, Commissioner Lopez. Further discussion on this second one?
As you can see, this role that we serve is difficult. And so I, you know, I appreciate like you, you making those distinctions. I know there, there are difficulties when, you know, you want to hold on to something 1880. It, it is significant even though it's not original. And I, 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 I understand. I, I also come through that report. And, you know, I can't deny her, I think it's her, a report and her credentials are long. So it's not with, out the role. This role is very difficult, you guys. But so, yeah, that's what I just wanted to say.
Any further discussion?
I, I just wanted to make the comment. It is difficult because, you know, you like the property, there's history. My great-great-great-grandfather lived on that block when he lived in St. Helena. Probably went into that house because it was one of his neighbors. But it doesn't have historical significance anymore. We have to make our decisions based on the information that we have. It's legally binding and we make the decisions that we have to make.
Well said. Shall we go forward with the, I think we had the motion already. Go ahead and call the roll?
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavell?
Yes.
And Chair Warner?
Yes.
Chair Warner, I would like to point out, it is nine o'clock, and if you'd like to take a vote to extend the meeting.
Yes, I would move that we extend the meeting for another 20 minutes. And is there a second for that?
Yes.
Yes, sorry.
Call the roll?
I apologize. Can you repeat the second?
We moved to extend the meeting for 20 minutes. I moved and Commissioner Cavell seconded it.
Chair, Chair Warner?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavell?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
And Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you for keeping us straight there. Okay, we're on to scheduled items and department reports, if any. We can probably do six and seven together, and if we want to, we could even throw in eight. Ms. DeRosa?
Good evening. Well, congratulations working through a very big packet and a big item. Would like to welcome back again Commissioner Lopez and all the best on your full recovery. And then just a reminder, again, I know we've mentioned this, but we, we really are encouraging a lot of public attendance and comments for our study session at 4:30 on the 16th of December. And we will be presenting a staff report and publishing that the week before. We will not have any items for the 6:00 PM meeting that, that evening, but I, I think that will give us some leeway to have a good discussion at 4:30. The January 6th meeting is canceled, but the next meeting on January 20th, we will have four items at this time. And so that summarizes what we've got to look forward into in the next 30 days. Thank you.
I had just, just one comment suggestion to my fellow commissioners. I found this very valuable. If you go back to the zoning update vote, votes in October of 2022, there's quite an extensive set of public comments and, and, and staff reporting. In fact, I think, as I recall, and Commissioner Anderson will recall this, staff put together a spreadsheet matrix of all the comments that had been received on the zoning code update from, I guess, 2020, when it first started. I found that as a great valuable reminder or a reference for what were some of the goals and objectives of the zoning code update and what the public comments were at that time. And I'm hoping we get a good, robust involvement by both practitioners and members of the public and the community at our workshop. I want to, and this is for Ms. DeRosa, I want to keep the staff presentation at somewhat of a minimum so that we actually allow a lot more time for people to provide comments. I think, though, the staff presentation can provide a framework that goes back to what were the goals and objectives of the zoning code update to begin with, what have been some of the lessons learned. That's one of the things I think is going to be very valuable. But I also think it's very important to encourage the public, practitioners and others who see it from the outside to basically have plenty of time to, to provide their comments, if that makes sense.
Yeah, absolutely. I thank you for those comments. And we also actually have a working matrix as, since the code has been adopted. And it wasn't, excuse me, I just clarify, it was 2023, not 2022, October.
That's right, sorry.
So if you go back on the agenda, it, it is October. But we have been complete, continuing to add to a working matrix of corrections and things where we see some internal conflict or things that could be further clarified. So that will be an attachment to the staff report. And if I have the opportunity, I will try and prioritize that of what I think should be the lower hanging fruit for us to bring forward. Thank you.
Other comments from commissioners in terms of the agenda?
I have agenda forecast item, if that's okay.
Sure.
And it just, as it says here, these items should be consistent with and work to implement adopted council goals. And I just have the goals from the city council. Strengthen fiscal resilience, improve infrastructure and further environmental sustainability, pursue water security and prudent management of water resources, provide effective community information and opportunity for engagement, enhance quality of life, improve employee recruitment, retention and morale, optimize organizational effectiveness, implement capital improvement plans. So my, my motion is to put on future agendas. Maybe one, you know, I have a few that are particular importance as these development projects come in. So health and safety standards in city planning and growth management. I'd like to request broader discussion on how the planning department is evaluating and pursuing public health and safety objectives in connection with development projects, growth management and the city's long-term sustainability, particularly relating to water security and emergency preparedness. Health and safety are both broad concepts and they are central to effective municipal planning. I believe it would be valuable for the city to identify and study what are measurable health standards and metrics the city uses or could use to evaluate development impacts? What health means specifically in the context of St. Helena and how future growth. what health means specifically in the context of St. Helena, and how future growth aligns with those values. On the safety side, I appreciate the thorough work previously done regarding visibility triangle corners by police and fire departments. I would welcome discussion on additional safety considerations at the city planning scale, including but not limited to emergency evacuation capacity, using principles similar to the building code, life safety analysis, occupant loads, exit widths, exit count, dead end, travel limits. We have to do this for exiting buildings and public buildings. I think we need to do this for exiting cities as it, as well as cities in landscapes that have limited exits. A citywide analysis of evacuation routes and cumulative exiting capacity during a full-scale emergency. Whether the existing street network and valley road systems can safely accommodate our current population during evacuation, and how that capacity changes as additional housing is built. Identification of thresholds where future growth may require additional mitigation of new exit infrastructure. Regional coordination throughout Napa Valley for evacuation planning, learning from the recent wildfire evacuations like the LA Palisades Fire where congestion created life-threatening conditions. Community engagement. Process and accountability with is item four, goal four. Provide effective community information and opportunities for engagement. I request an agenda discussion to clarify this. In the city newsletter that recently came out, there is a sentence that said, while there is no requirement for the city council or staff to address public, specific public comments during a meeting, a response in the moment is not expected. This raises an important follow-up question. If there is no requirement to address public input during or after meetings, how does a city define meaningful engagement? Since engagement is defined as a two-way process of collaboration and intentional interaction between residents and local government to improve a community and its decision-making. It seems appropriate to discuss how this principle is implemented in practice and what improvements could strengthen public trust and participation. Infrastructure and environmental sustainability.
If you've got something written, maybe you can provide it to us. You don't need to read it for the record. We can provide it for the record. This is agenda forecasting, and I might say I'd be happy to work with you on what's within the jurisdiction of the planning commission to consider and what's actually within the jurisdiction of other entities.
And we have a governance meeting on the 12th, and we could-
We could talk about it then.
Have a discussion, yeah, with her.
I happen to be, have been very active with another hat on, on emergency evacuation planning, and am very, very knowledgeable on what roles the city provides, as well as what departments are involved. So why don't we talk about that at the governance meeting?
Sure.
But also, I'd be happy to work with you on items on that list that, in your letter, that are within the jurisdiction of the planning commission.
And I think in my understanding of the planning commission document here, that understanding how city planning policies is under, it's in here. We don't write the policies, but we can talk about policy. And so that's, and that's why I motion to agendize these topics for discussion, talking.
Let's, let's discuss them at the governance meeting, because it's not subject to a motion. It's something that we would need to be sure we can do within the jurisdiction of the planning commission versus within the jurisdiction of other, other bodies in the city.
Well, I would like to then put forth this in public view, because if the governance meeting is not public, then there's a difference between me speaking this right now and us doing it in the closed door. I think this actually, out of, out of respect, really actually aligns with what Wayne Leong presented in the public forum.
And I understand, but we're not here to, to agendize items. We're here to make recommendations for agendas, and I think we need further consideration of what you're recommending for the agendas. I'm not, I'm not ready to support agendizing all those elements in your letter. Some of them may relate to the planning commission's jurisdiction, some may be better relating to the city council or to other bodies in the city that are involved in these things.
And I might also add that I know Director Leach is actively working on the update to the city's water neutrality policy, and he's bringing that forward to various bodies, and this might be something that you may want to, I'm not sure what the schedule is for the next public meeting on that, Mr. Leach, but that would address the water resources and how we're managing that.
Yeah, it's probably within the first quarter of next year.
Okay. I mean, we just have a lot of development projects, and water sustainability is a city council goal, so I just thought it would be, as it says, agenda forecast. These items should be consistent with, so I just-
They need to be consistent with our jurisdiction, and I think several of them, you've already presented to the city council in recommendations, and I'm, I'm perfectly happy to have you continue to make recommendations directly to the city council on items that are part of city council direction and policy, as well as other bodies like the fire department and police department that are responsible in public works for various issues where we are not, we are not authorized to deal with those issues.
It would be really great to get a city planning, planning commission jurisdiction, like clarity, because in planning, in planning commission, in city planning, it seems like these policies are important, and we can see here tonight-
They, they are important, but they aren't part of our jurisdiction. We follow the direction of the city council who makes policy on these matters, and that's where basically we don't agendize items over which we have no authority.
Point of order, I would like to just clarify, I would like legal counsel to, to clarify whether or not planning commission as a written code versus verbal description from Chris Warner is a, is under purview of a planning commission.
Chair and commission, I'm, I'm grateful for the opportunity to talk to you for a moment. I wanted to mic up earlier and let you know that the Brown Act actually prohibits a, a lengthy discussion or a discussion this long of, of these kind of issues. It's not on the agenda. All that's on the agenda is a brief recommendation for future agenda items, and I think this has gone beyond brief, so if you could wrap this up and maybe put it on a future agenda if you want to have a lengthier discussion, that would be great.
Thank you. Those are just topics for future agendas.
Yeah, but it's gone on quite a bit, so I think we're past the Brown Act's requirement that it be brief.
That's right, and we're, and just to clarify, we are not agreeing to put them on a future agenda at this time at all. We can discuss them later. Any further agenda forecasting or recommendations?
No, no, thank you, Chair.
As Chair Potte used to say, his favorite part of the, the agenda is next, and that is I move to adjourn this meeting. And we are adjourned.